Thank you, everyone. I hereby call the Palm Springs Adjourned Regular City Council Meeting of June 30th, 2020 to order. City Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Garner.
Present.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Here.
Mayor Coors.
Here.
All council is present.
Great. Uh, City Manager David Ready, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. We shall begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. So, the next item is Q A. Consideration of adopting the revised fiscal year 2020-21 comprehensive budget. Please note, the public comment was taken and the hearing was closed at the regular meeting of June 25th, 2020. Um, a little background for those who did not participate or watched the last meeting. Uh, so we did open the public hearing. We had forty or more public comments. Uh, we discussed the budget and some ideas. Um, and at about 12:15 a.m. decided it would make sense to continue the discussion. Um, there were a number of requests for additional information and research, um, from staff. And I know, I think almost every council member, um, wanted to do some more work, um, and get some more data. Uh, that was the official public hearing. So just so folks know, even though we discussed it before, you know, that's the time we really get to deliberate and go back and forth and make a decision. So, um, I know some people, um, expressed to me, you know, why didn't we just vote? We didn't vote because there's still things to discuss, and this is such an important, probably the most important thing we do is our budget. It's how we set priorities. It's how we fund our city. And even without the emergency, when we do a budget, everything's on the table. Everything should be looked at and analyzed throughout the process. And I really appreciate, um, the efforts people made to do that. Uh, I also wanted to thank staff because I know that from Friday morning through the emails with more information we were getting an hour ago, uh, they've been working all weekend, long hours to get information, to help us work through it. We can't all do that together. So, uh, I know every single member of council was talking to the city manager, which is what we agreed to do, was working all weekend as well to really try and come up with information so we can have the thoughtful deliberate discussion. Um, the budget liaisons, councilmember Middleton, I worked hard on a proposal as well, if you want to share. Um, when we get to that with council to, as a discussion point, so we have something concrete in addition to what staff prepared to discuss. Uh, so that's a way of background. That's how we got to tonight. So, so the public knows. There is some new information. Uh, city manager, um, in doing work and looking at numbers, and today is June 30th, at the end of the current fiscal year, um, was able to do some analysis to see how much money came in in certain areas, which makes some changes to the money we have available in reserves. The other thing is the governor just signed the state budget, which included money for cities. Uh, the good news is Palm Springs will be receiving just under $600,000, at least $598,000 to be used for expenses between March of this year and the end of this year for public safety related to COVID, homelessness related to COVID, are sort of the key things that are highlighted in that. Um, I do want to say, though, that given what's in the budget for cities, what we're getting is offensive and outrageous. So, the biggest cities in the state, um, and I, I will share them, and thank you to the city attorney for getting me this. So, Los Angeles, San Diego, San Jose, San Francisco, Fresno, and Sacramento will be getting $174 per person for these purposes. Long Beach, Oakland, Bakerfield, Anaheim, Santa Ana, Riverside, and Stockton will be getting $85 per person for these purposes. Palm Springs and every other city will be getting $12 per person. And the best explanation I've gotten from anyone in Sacramento is those cities are the ones that make up the majority of the legislators, and they get the fix that the money goes to their cities. And that is incredibly offensive. The value of a Palm Springs resident is not $12. It's the value of a Los Angeles resident is $174. It is once again the state and legislature saying that people that live in the big cities are not worth as much as people who don't. They didn't look at what the city's expenses were. They didn't look at part-time residents. They didn't look at tourism. They didn't look at actually your real costs. All they did was say per person and gave the overwhelming bulk of the money to big cities. And sometimes that happens because they have more people, but they're actually give them more per person. And in our situation, $160,000 more per person to address public safety and homelessness than we're getting. And I personally find it outrageous, and I did want to voice that. So while we're pleased to be getting money that we can use, uh, is really troubling that the allocations were done, and no one has an explanation other than politics so far that I've been able to receive from anyone in the legislature. So with that good, bad news, um, I know the city manager has some updates from what the staff presented last time. So I think we should start with that. And again, David, thank you. I know you, Marcus, and Nancy in particular, um, from Zooms were there all weekend. And I know a lot of other staff did a lot of work as well, as did the city attorney in doing research for us. So I want to thank all of you for, for all you've done. So David, you, is it you?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Great. Thank you. All right. Good evening, every, everyone. Uh, just a couple of, uh, updates I would like to note, but first I would, with regard to-
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I can hardly hear, um, our city manager speak, Dr. Ready speak.
All right, let's try this again. How's, how's it coming through now?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. Great. So a couple of things I would just like to note, um, with regard to revenue. So the end of the fiscal year actually closes today. Uh, there are revenues that lag behind, as you can appreciate, uh, hotel tax, T O T in particular. Uh, we won't get, uh, June's, uh, receipts revenue until, uh, the, the end of July. Uh, we are just now getting finalizing May's now. Uh, so there's a hotel tax and then also sales tax and property tax and a few others will lag behind. Uh, when we get through, uh, July and particularly early August, when we have a full true-up of our additional revenues, but we also know that we've had some additional expenses, such as other early leave, and there's always some open purchase orders that we need to finalize. That being said, we'll be able to give you a final accounting of what our revenues will be, uh, later in July, early August. That being said, what I can tell you this evening is that there are a couple that we can update you on. Uh, and I will, if we could show the slide, please? Uh, the other, the one you just had up. There you go. Thank you. So the additional, uh, revenue, the, uh, there are two. The downtown redevelopment project, there was $900,000 uh, that, that is left in that project account. So when we went forward to purchase the land, uh, for the, for the downtown park, and then there was some additional infrastructure work that needed to be done as part of that, uh, there was a change order, uh, of several million dollars that, that council approved for that project. As it turns out, that is now completed, and there's $900,000 that has not been spent. And that wasn't spent because the project changed and certain things were, were, were removed from the project. So for example, like the third elevator. Um, the bottom line is that $900,000, uh, we've confirmed, uh, with the developer and with the project that we can scoop that back up, in essence. So that comes back to the general fund. And then, um, the finance director has analyzed licenses and permit fees, about $750,000. So we have a total of 1.6, uh, that we will be able to return to the general fund, which will go into, obviously, uh, the fund balance. So with the additional revenue on the expenditure side, if you recall, uh, last week's meeting, there was several items that were outstanding. Uh, we modified that a little bit because what's not on this list any longer is, uh, the animal shelter. We've, we've worked with the contractor, the animal shelter friends of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter who operate it. And, uh, it, it appears that they're able to meet, uh, that $300,000, uh, reduction, uh, that, that we had originally planned. So the bottom line to that is we will reduce their budget by 175,000. Uh, they are doing in-kind services of approximately 125. That gets us to the 300. So there's nothing more needed, uh, there. Also, with regard to what's not on this list is the downtown parking contract. Uh, at this point, it's been determined, we, we, we don't need to go forward with that, uh, in, in that same kind of contract that we had previously. So that brings us to what's left, as you see here, the three items, uh, the skate park, uh, the C V E P I hub, and the police body cameras. So those are the three, uh, final items of, of, that we talked about Thursday that still, uh, need a decision and direction from council on whether they should be, uh, funded or not. So with that, Mayor, I will turn it back over to you for council discussion.
Great. Um, so thank you for all that. And doing the math and checking with Marcus, it means our revised total fund balance is $3,648,000. And, uh, which is actually now, um, no, actually, sorry about that, is 3 million less. So it's about $20,648,000, um, that we would have, uh, currently in there. And our CalPERS restricted reserve is 22250. Um, and when we get done with this, we'll all do the math and see where we are. But, um, so Lisa and I spent a lot of time working on a proposal that we want to share. I'm sure other council members will as well. Uh, we think it's a good starting point, so we can have something on the table to move forward. And, you know, in our discussions, um, as a bunch of liaisons, we really took to heart the conversation we had. And, you know, two things that really stood out to us that we wanted to address. Um, one was comments, uh, by councilmember Woods and Mayor Pro Tim Holstich, uh, looking at what's going on with COVID and worse than it was when we talked Thursday with bars being closed and we'd had restaurants voluntary closed because of cases and the governor and, um, county public health and our supervisor at a meeting we were on saying, you know, slightly more could be closed, that we're in a really unknown budget situation, and it could be worse than we were hoping. And the need to be really careful with our reserves here, uh, was so important. And, you know, a comment as we discussed the issue of police funding, um, that both Mayor Pro Tim Holstich and councilmember Garner raised, but something councilmember Garner said that really struck me and councilmember Middleton when we talked is, um, we don't want to do something, if we don't do something on police funding different than is in the budget now, we don't want it to just go away. We need to know that we're going to move forward. And so we just want to sort of put out what we were thinking that will give us reserves without going into the restricted reserves and addresses, um, the other issues, including the one that you brought up, councilmember Garner. And so our main recommendation for savings is that we move to the more modified downtown park. The proposal that wouldn't do the full park, um, when things were really good economically, uh, would complete the bathroom and the substation, do some desert landscaping, put in a big lawn that could be used for concerts and events and other things. Um, that would save us $3 million that wasn't measured day. That's not going to be funds that we could be using for reserves or other priorities right now. Um, in that scenario, the supplies that we bought would be in storage, and in the future, we could move forward with that. Um, I know we've all gotten, um, letters and I've had some, uh, conversations that there are, of course, I was on the chamber board meeting, but our business stakeholders, the Chamber, Main Street, Hotel Authority Association, TS Resorts, um, are almost all residents of Palm Springs, as well as the developer of the downtown project. That's their recommendation, and that would save $3 million at a time when we don't know what's coming, but not preclude us from moving forward. Um, there's discussion of some fundraising efforts that could happen and other- There's discussion of some fundraising efforts that could happen and other things. So that is one recommendation we're doing. That brings us to the $23,650,000 in reserves if we do that. The additional expenses that we are recommending is $850,000 for the body cameras, at least an initial 150,000 to do, bring in whatever support that the liaisons want to work with the chief on looking at policing and the police budget. And really want to hear from liaisons about a timeline for that. You know, I talked to the chief, but you know, he felt within six months that work could all be done, but really want, I want your ideas, I think you've talked about this a lot more, but we want to make sure we were allocating money for that in the budget to use as you and the chief think is best in a transparent process. As far as CVP, you know, our thoughts, maybe we fund them for three months and have them come back in July and sort of tell us what they're going to use that funding for to help Palm Springs, right? There are conversations that, you know, it's mostly funded by Palm Springs and Palm Desert, not Valleywide as I think was originally intended. And I don't think we have the information. We got some from Councilmember Garner, but I think it's relatively new on our liaison there. So we didn't want to close them down, but we thought we shouldn't commit to six months without some more information, given how tight our budget is. As far as skate park, you know, we wanted to hear input, some questions of whether we were ready to open it, given people shouldn't be congregating right now and so could that wait till July? And then economic development and Councilmember Middleton and I just discussed this because this is the liaisons I am with Mayor Protem Hostage, but even talking to stakeholders, if there are the resources and we find the right people, there's a definite desire to add in the uptown downtown coordinator, who could also help with code enforcement during this time, and the deputy city manager for economic development. I know those searches have been ongoing and I think Mayor Protem and I, and it was sort of reiterated in my conversations with the business community, if we find the right people who can really look at, you know, what is going to move this city to be more, not just supporting our current businesses, but how do we diversify our economy as well? And if we can find the right person, that would be a priority. And whether we commit to it now in the budget or we commit to doing it if and when the right people are found is also up for discussion. So our main proposals were the park, saving of 3 million, body cameras at 850, police, research, analysis, whatever the right term is, at 150, and CVP at 80,000 as what we would like to move to have on the table for discussion. And I'll let Councilmember Middleton weigh in and then open it up for other ideas and comments and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were you going to make a motion at this point or did you want to do that at a later stage?
We can do that later, but I want to have a proposal we can at least discuss from, so at least we have a basis. Because I think other council members will probably have some-
Okay.
-suggestions and get a sense of where everyone is on each issue as we get to it. Maybe.
So I want to try to keep this short. We have gone through, I think now, nine different city council meetings and the mayor and I, as the budget committee, have met at least twice that many times over the last many months and we're down to the last few hours of this fiscal year. The first thing I would like to do is to thank everyone in our community. Clearly, there are some extremely strong opinions within the community as to how we should proceed. And in true Palm Springs fashion, no one has been shy in expressing their opinions as to what direction we should go. And I must say, very few have been of divided opinion. They believe we should either be heading east or west or however you want to describe it, but there clearly are some very strong differences of opinion within the community. Staff has done an absolutely remarkable job throughout all of this. And lastly, my compliments to the city council. It is a, it is truly an honor to work with each one of you. I consistently tell everyone, this is a council that listens to one another. We don't always agree and we frankly oftentimes comment things in very different directions, but we listen and we work together to resolve, to resolve the issues. And that does not happen on every elected body and it is something that is truly important. I think one of the things we need to be very cognizant of going forward is this is very much a living budget. It is going to be reviewed each and every month and so we are making a budget statement that is 12 months long, but we know we will be back every single month looking at what the revenue numbers are, what the expense numbers are and making a decision as to how are we going to move forward based on the new data that we have. One of the areas that is an emotional issue throughout our country and is deservedly so is the type of policing that will take place in our community and as we look at what kind of policing takes place throughout the country. I believe that we have the ability and the responsibility in Palm Springs to do this right. We have the kind of community, we have the kind of leadership from Chief Brian Reyes that makes it possible for us to do a full, complete, community-involved, police-involved review of what we've asked them to do, what resources we've given them to do it with and how we should proceed in the future. And we can't do that job in just a few hours, much less a few days. This is something, if we're going to do it right, is going to take time and I want to see us do it right. I'm pleased that as we move into this, we have clearly and unanimously, community, police department and city council made a determination that it is time for cameras to be worn and that money will definitely be put into this budget. The review with a consultant, I think is something that is needed and appropriate and I look forward to being a part of that conversation. Last thing I'm going to say is to go back to where I started, absolutely none of us know what the next few weeks, months or the next year is going to be like. The numbers that we heard on Monday from the county in terms of new reports, the hospitalizations, the number of deaths that are taking place are absolutely stunning to look at. And what we are going to be facing in this country from a healthcare crisis, I believe absolutely argues that we proceed with a budget that is based on prudence and caution and that is why we're giving up an awful lot of things that I hate to give up. But coming in with a reserve balance that is in excess of $22 million is probably where I was not a few weeks ago, but it is definitely where I'm at today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who wants to go next? Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. So thank you very much to city staff. I, yes, I agree that we've, all of the council members definitely were speaking with staff this weekend and they are just the best, truly, with making sure that they're considering all of the different options that are available to us and I truly appreciate that. I also spent a lot of time talking with Mayor Protem Hostage this weekend and trying to think about what it is that we had discussed at the last meeting and ways to move forward. We also met with Chief Reyes and with the city manager to discuss these things as well. So I think that one of the most important things about all of this is that we move forward. And I hear that, you know, my fellow council members saying that today and I really appreciate that because that's what we were wanting to make sure happened. But I think it's more than just research or review, it's action. So we think that it's really important to have an advisory group of experts that looks at not just police, but public safety in Palm Springs. What does it look like for us to be safe? It's not just police, it's not just the fire department, there's more to it. Is that providing more options or any options really for mental health issues? It's housing, it's education, it's substance abuse. One thing that Dieter Crawford mentioned is reentry programs for the formerly incarcerated. I mean, these are, these are all things that help us to be a safe place to live and that raises our quality of life. So when we're talking about getting together and doing these issues, you know, we've done it for the library before, we've done it in regards to policing before after the incident of Warm Sand. We've come together in a larger way to address issues as a community. And so I'd like to see that, we would like to see that with residents, with experts working on the issue of safety and public safety at large. I'm also, we also want to have a third-party investigation and review of the police department that is not just here's a report and that's it, but actually is something that we can take and that we can use in conjunction with the advisory group to really decide what it is that we think the police department should look like for Palm Springs. You know, a lot of people have been saying things like, oh, well, this is a national issue, we're not Minneapolis. We're not Minneapolis, we're Palm Springs. And in Palm Springs, we have our own unique things to discuss. We have our own issues, which is why it's important that we reflect critically on what those issues are. Now, the issue of policing has been brought to the national forefront, but this is not the first time that it's been in the news. This is not the first time that citizens and residents of our country have looked into issues of policing and wanted new models for it. This isn't a new conversation, it's just one that's really developed this energy and I think it's a good thing because that's how we grow and change and be better, is where we look critically at everything that we do. The other thing is, is the listening sessions. We're doing our first listening session, I think I can announce this, on July 11th. It's a Saturday at 11:00 a.m. It's going to be on Zoom. We want everyone to come and be able to participate and let us know your experiences in Palm Springs, whether that relates to the police or dealing with racism, systemic racism, we want to hear from you. We want to know what it is that we can do at the city to make everyone feel welcome here. And of course, finally, the body cameras, I, you know, I know we all agree on that. So I'm appreciative of the budget options that came forward from the subcommittee. I think that I want to hear from Mayor Protem and I want to hear from Councilmember Woods on their thoughts on those, but I do just want to say thank you for listening to us and for helping us move this conversation forward.
Any council member? Who wants to go next? Okay, Mayor Protem Hostage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you for the proposals and I agree with Councilmember Garner's sort of report on where we're at after meeting in depth with the police chief and the city manager about finding sort of savings in the overall budget and talking about efficiencies in the police department. We did talk a lot with the police chief that there is a lot in our city that we require the police to solve because we aren't a social service agency and we don't have enough mental health workers or homelessness advocates or workers for the city since the county provides those services and doesn't usually provide enough in the city of Palm Springs or the Coachella Valley. And so talked about sort of how can we solve these problems for the city and these systemic issues instead of just throwing police at them because that's not in the police officer's job descriptions either. So it sounds like there's a lot of commonality around our proposal and the budget subcommittee's proposal. So we, like Councilmember Garner said, included a third-party review of the police department along with the advisory group and wanted to fund that today so that we make sure that we move forward on that because that you have to fund things that you want to prioritize and we want to do that. So that's included in the budget subcommittee's proposal. And we talked about funding the body cameras as well, which is in your proposal and we wanted to include that in the budget tonight. We had talked to the city manager about how to find the money to fund body cameras. What we heard from the community by and large was that the cost of body cameras should come from the police department and it's a police department function and it's related to officers' duties. We talked to the police chief and heard that, you know, if we were to right now make those cuts from the police department, it would involve cutting officers, a lot of female officers, sort of officers that are really excellent, that add to our diversity metrics that are important for the city. And so we left that open and we're sort of not willing to do that at this time and really wanted to focus on finding that savings elsewhere. But I think primarily if there is cost savings that comes from the police department in the next year, to really make sure that the cost savings is applied to the cost of body cameras. Because again, I, we heard from residents, you know, we don't want to take more money away from parks and rec or, you know, government services to residents for different departments. So that's the, the police body cameras and the third-party review along with the advisory group. The other items in your proposal, I personally agree with. I can't speak for Councilmember Garner, so I agree with funding CVP for three months and having them come back. I think that's an excellent proposal. And I agree with the state park that we probably just don't want to open it up because of COVID right now and we could delay that cost. I don't agree, the only item I don't agree on your list is the park. Shocker, I'm sure you're surprised. It's not, in my opinion, saving $3 million. This is a project that was already allocated and we already allocated from prior Measure J funds. Measure J is for investments in downtown and for infrastructure for residents, residents have paid for it. And so to invest it in just subsidizing government salaries to cover the cost of this pandemic and take away an amenity like the park, and we've already spent, taken millions of dollars from Measure J this past fiscal year that we're currently in just to fill the budget for the city. And we promised residents and we are working on Measure J and my husband campaigned for it, that that would not be done. And so I feel really uncomfortable allocating more Measure J dollars away from investments for residents to, you know, subsidize the city's budget, which is inflated at this time and, you know, we have reduced revenue. So I strongly oppose the park proposal, but otherwise support all of your proposals from your subcommittee.
I have some comments on the park. Councilmember Woods, do you want to jump in?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just on the park, and I appreciate that. I would just note that, you know, Measure J was for a whole bunch of things that, so the funding that was going to libraries been taken, funding that's going to road repairs, a need to spend more on moving forwards been taken. And unanimously, the Measure J subcommittee on the downtown park and the Parks and Rec Subcommittee on the downtown park said not to do the park at this expense, which is way more than what they had recommended to start with because costs grow. So I do want to share that, they were unanimous in that. And even among them, and I did a Zoom with my neighborhood reps today who also wanted to see the mid-level park, although some wanted to go fundraise- to see the mid-level park, although some wanted to go fundraise, one wanted to go fundraise for the park, for that $3 million delta. But there was definitely a sense from those two commissions, at least the subcommittees, that we should do that, and I agree. I mean, Measure J was designed for infrastructure, including downtown where the majority of it is gone. And Measure D was to add more police and fire, you know, and we're cutting from both those departments. It's just we're in an emergency now. So normally I would agree, I've never supported, I didn't support using Measure J for the buds because I didn't think that was infrastructure. But we're taking things from everything now. So that's, that's, I just want to share, and, you know, we heard from, you know, our tourism stakeholders, the chamber, you know, everyone's concerned that we're not, that they want us to put more money away. And that a park that actually can be used for more events for, you know, one of the things we heard was wine tastings and food shows and other things over in residence, not just tourist to it, was brought up. So just another side to that, that's all. I totally appreciate your opinion because I would have had it previously.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And I think some of it is a conversation about which this council had discussed and previously agreed to, is that if we can find that $3 million from private philanthropy, from grants, from other monies, that that would be worth the investment versus all of the sunk costs. And so a lot of those stakeholders, their views are important. I'm not sure if they saw all of the information that council saw, which is that, you know, we've already spent money on fixtures that just won't be used if we put in a grassy field. You know, we're way down the line where we have construction and so we're going to have costs from the contractor for canceling or delaying. That is going to cost time and money to design a grassy field. I mean, there's just a lot of data that the city council has received, but I'm not sure all of the public is aware of how much money has already been expended on this park plan versus coming up with a new park plan, which always seems cheaper, but is always more expensive as you get down the line.
And I did share that, at least with the organizations. We've got 600,000 materials that will go into storage until such time as we might be able to complete the park. And with all those other costs, the Assistant City Manager showed us about $3 million savings between the two. So just at the delta and of course, the maintenance of 2,000 plants versus the lawn and the ongoing maintenance or some additional costs the other way. But I do appreciate that. Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everything that my counterparts have said. I want to also thank staff for working hard from last meeting to this meeting, but actually through several months that we've been working through this and everyone that has given us an opinion as to how they, we're in this situation because we're in dire straits. And as I said before, I don't think those dire straits are going to go away, even though I don't have a magic ball. The COVID crisis does not seem to be easy, easing up at all, and it has a financial implication on Palm Springs. I do thank everybody, I do think it is important to put money in the budget and I want to thank everyone for that effort as far as looking at efficiencies in our public safety and what our public safety can look like. I think we are looking at efficiencies in all our departments. And I think that's really important and it's absolutely necessary at this point in our budgetary analysis. So I think it's important to put money where we want it to, to spend it so that we can get potentially better efficiencies than what we currently have, if we have inefficiencies in our public safety departments. I'm, I just, we have invested in our downtown park, the only thing I don't want to see happen is any of the infrastructure that we put in removed. I think one of the earlier comments from staff is it would take $1 million to make a grassy field by removing infrastructure. I could not support that, so that's a question of staff. I, you know, I can support a progressive building of the park, I can support what our, what, what the subcommittee came up with, but I just don't want to spend $1 million if we're removing some infrastructure to make that happen. So we'll get that from staff.
Can we get that now, just while we're on it? Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Marcus, so, because my understanding is, at least from our discussions, as we finish the restrooms, we finish the substation and that building, none of that would get removed in this proposal. But I want to, is there infrastructure that we're going to take out that would be wasted? Infrastructure?
That's correct. So, so the infrastructure that serves the police substation and restroom building would, would be per plan and would remain. The idea would be that we would move forward with a modified landscape plan for the rest of the project. So there wouldn't be any wasted infrastructure, there would be some challenges if you wanted to go back and implement the approved landscape plan with the palm grove trees and the event stage and those other things. Obviously, what we put in now in the interim would have to come out to make way for what was shown on the approved drawing. So there could be some overlap there, to the extent we did later move forward with the currently approved plan.
You're on you, David.
Thank you very much, Marcus, I appreciate that. And we can have a discussion about what those costs might be as, as I'm finishing my, my discussion. The, I like the recommendations that's been brought forward. I'm a little concerned about SEVAP. I, you know, one thing that's come out of SEVAP, to the best of my understanding, is that we need high-speed internet to really jumpstart our economy and to diversify the economy. $165,000 might be better spent to do something that's already been outlined that we should do. I would rather see the money spent in that format, maybe through our new deputy city manager for development, community development, have it kind of go in that direction and then have SEVAP kind of pitch us and see where our money situation is in the next three months and then have them pitch us on what they're actually going to do for us that would be beneficial to us and our own economy here. So I kind of disagree with putting that in upfront, I would like to see that put in back and I think the money would be better spent to improve our, our internet infrastructure in the city. And with that, I, I thank everybody again for their, their assistance in getting to the point that we are today.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. And let me ask that, so Councilmember Middleton and I were thinking it's three months, we could even do a month, we don't want to close them down, which might happen if we didn't fund them at all, and I don't know if that's accurate from the city manager, but I do think we wanted them to come to our next meeting and sort of put the out, the benefits from Palm Springs, and I agree with you, that money could be used to help us get high-speed internet. That's just so important for so many reasons in our city right now. You know, so many people, especially in technology, have been told they can work from home for the rest of their careers. And this is the place they look and then they realize they could get kicked off a Zoom meeting and they're not so interested. So, you know, when it comes to the city's future, how hard it is for businesses, for so many things, so I don't know if, who the right person on staff is, if that's you, David, on SEVAP. Like if we said we're not funding them today, do they close tomorrow or how would that work?
No, they wouldn't close tomorrow necessarily. They do have some funding, other funding sources, they get funding from other cities, however, not as much as they had originally nor in the past when we put the program together. I, I think a, if not six months, a lesser amount might be, it keeps them going for the next few months and it might be helpful to have them as a, as a discussion item on a council agenda, come in and, and outline what it is, the benefit, how they interpret it and how they can articulate the benefit to our economic development in the city and regionally, and then council can assess it at that point. One of the reasons why we just didn't, when we realized it was completely out, you know, once it goes away, it'd be hard to bring it back. So I wanted to make sure the council was able to ask, ask more questions, get more information, particularly from SEVAP themselves, so you can make a determination of whether it's worth your continued funding support.
So I know we were, the liaisons, whatever we're called, Councilmember Middleton and I were thinking three months, not six, but if we can have them back at our next meeting, maybe we just do a month for now and then hear sort of what they, you know, their plans for the next year and the impact for Palm Springs on our economy and then we can make a really informed decision, if that works as a, you know, as a way of forwarding. Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you. I can support just doing SEVAP for a month. I am very intrigued by what we need to do to create high-speed internet at the quality levels that are needed in Palm Springs. But I don't think we have any idea how much that would cost. And that's going to require some staff analysis as to how should we proceed? Is it something we should do alone here in Palm Springs or is it something we should do in conjunction with other cities in the Coachella Valley? And so I'm absolutely supportive of that goal and I'm just not sure what's the best way to proceed towards that at this point, other than to get some analysis from staff as to what are we looking at in Boston, what are our options on it? With the park, you know, this budget process has been one of drawing lines in the sand and saying, I really want to see us achieve this and then realizing that it's just not going to be possible. And there may be $3 million out there in philanthropy that would help get us across the finish line for what was an absolutely beautifully designed park with an incredible amount of community input. But I don't see that money there right now and reluctantly. I think this is the best way to go until we can see how the economy is growing and developing and see whether or not it is realistic to be able to raise that kind of money. As I talk to my friends in nonprofit organizations here locally and across the state, they are struggling right now because people just are unsure of their own resources and this is not the time that they are making new investments in philanthropy.
Thank you. Question just on the park for Assistant City Manager Fuller, which is, because I was asked this question. If they, if people felt they could get commitments in three or six months, would a lawn be done by then or could a full park still go on? I know this was discussed probably for the last month or two and nothing got started, but there are still some people who are interested in potentially trying. So they did ask me that question, which I said I would ask you tonight. I'm sorry, I didn't ask you before, but it's.
No, it's, it's okay. We're, we're close to resolving the fix in the garage on the west side of the park, which has held up them proceeding with the rest of the park site construction, like putting in the irrigation, piping and the electrical system. So once we, we resolve the, the parking garage fix, they'll be ready to start moving forward with the park site development in addition to continuing with the police substation. So definitely within three to six months, if it's a simple, reduced landscape turf design, they could be well underway and, and by six months, maybe even be completed with it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Garner, oh.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you. In terms of just the other things that we were talking about, and I'll, I'll end with my thoughts of the park. I'm fine with funding SEVAP for a month and getting more information from them, I think that makes sense and, and I'm on board with that. In terms of the economic development positions, I do think those are extremely important and I support that, the housing position especially, we really need that. And one thing that we're looking at right now is a ton of new people coming into our city, buying property, and we need to think about how that's going to impact our long-term residents and our renters. You know, what are we going to do about that? And I think that's a conversation we're going to have to have before somebody is hired because things are moving quickly. But I do think that having a dedicated person in that kind of position can help us to come up with good solutions that we need for, for the city. As far as the skate park, I'm okay with not funding right now because we won't be opening it, but I do want to see, see it open. I think we got a few comments that were, you know, let, let the kids skate, and I, and I think that's right. You know, we don't, as we said before, we don't have a lot of amenities for children in Palm Springs and I think that the skate park's great. I remember when it opened, my, my brother was so excited about it and spent a lot of time there and there's still a lot of kids that use it now. So I, I do want to just put that out there, that I, I would hope that we can, once the skate park can open, it's a, it's a small amount of money that we would be funding, I, I think we can probably find that and I, I'd like that, as council would agree to, to just keep that in mind and, and put it on one of the future budget agendas. As for the park, everyone knows I'm not a fan of the park. I haven't been a fan of the park, but I was also not a part of the process. So it's really hard for me because while the park is not what I would envision for downtown, we did have residents who, who took the time to look at it and evaluate it and vote on it. And because I wasn't there for those meetings, I can't, I, I don't, I can't really levy any criticisms about that process. So, so for me, I'm still very concerned that I haven't really gotten kind of a, more of an answer on how we can progressively do this. I do think it's important to our residents to make sure that we follow through with the things that we commit to. When I also think of $3 million in savings, I think about that going back to our residents. And what I'm hearing as a proposal right now is that that's just going back to reserves and, and to kind of fund these few things that we've discussed. And for me, that's not acceptable. So when I first complained about the park in the beginning of this process, it was because we were looking at potentially virtually gutting our Parks and Rec and library, right? So for me, it was absolutely not having, you know, no park if it's going to mean that we're getting rid of Parks and Rec. So now we're in a different place. So for me, I at least want to see a commitment to finishing the park that we promised the residents. And I would love to be able to hear, you know, none of, you know, we don't all of a sudden boom have the park, it comes in pieces. Can we put in pieces of it and continue forward? Does all of the vegetation have to be planted at once? I doubt it, right? You know, I want to hear if there are alternatives to slowly moving this park forward so that it can still happen, but we can see savings along the way, especially with fundraising. Or, you know, another option too is, when we are, since we are looking at reserves, if we do see that money is coming into this city, is there a point where we can say, okay, let's go ahead and fund the park? Can we make that kind of commitment? I'm just curious, you know, what people think about, about that because I don't want it to, to never happen because we did make, we did make that commitment. And it, so it is tricky for me because, you know, I wouldn't have voted for it, but we made a commitment to our residents and we should follow through.
So on the park, while we're on it is, and Councilmember Middleton and I talked about that, like, you know, not saying we're never going to do it as well. But two things, one, the reason it's in reserves is because if things do start getting closed down again, we don't want to get back where we're cutting Parks and Rec and the library and the pool. So, and if things turn around and are better, we can use it for this. So that, that was our thinking of why we were putting it in reserves for now because we don't know what's coming and it looks worse than we had thought just a couple of weeks ago. And the other piece was, one of the things I heard from people was, when Councilmember Woods mentioned the park was still in the budget, the last they heard from us was the majority, not all of us, Mayor Frithen-Holstich on the, did not, saying we wanted to slow down the park, we wanted to look at savings there. And then the next thing, it was in the budget that we're about to vote on, and that surprised a lot of people. So if we're going to continue it and spend it, I think we'd, we'd want to hear from the community again, given the current situation. There are a lot of needs that didn't exist when our economy was booming that we're hearing from residents they're concerned about. And so, so that was part of my, my thinking on it. And so that was part of my thinking on it, just to share. Yeah. And then Mayor Protem Holstich.
Oh, thank you. Just one more thing about that, too, is the other reason that it's hard for me with the downtown park is because we need a lot of things in our current parks, the parks that I think a lot of our residents use, well, obviously, they use more often because the downtown parks exist. But I think in general, I know a lot of residents with children avoid downtown because parking is bad for them. And we've been talking about putting in updates to our parks forever. My dad likes to remind me that, you know, since Chris Mills was on council, we've been talking about doing upgrades to our parks, and it hasn't happened yet. And I know that we're going to do some of that with some other funding that we've discussed already, but that is something as well to consider in all of this, as you bring up resident opinion, Mayor.
Yeah, and that's a really good point. Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you. And I agree, and I think that's why Measure J is so important. And I know that we cut a lot from Measure J, and I raised from the beginning, I have concerns about that. We're cutting the community projects, the $1 million a year for the projects that the community proposes. We're cutting our street repairs, which is really important, you know, and we're cutting the parks, park investments that Measure J was moving forward on with the Parks and Rec mission. So that's why, you know, I don't think Measure J should be used. We have to use it now, that's why I'm supporting it, because it's such a crisis, we couldn't do this without Measure J. But talking about the efficiency of our government system, so that we don't ever use Measure J as a piggy bank to pay for salaries or, you know, things that, it wasn't for, it was for, you know, the water features that are existing parks, they're as old as Councilmember Garner and my husband using them when they were kids. I mean, it, we need real investments. And so, you know, I agree with your comments, and that's why Measure J is important to me. So that's my, my question is about the actual proposal for the park, because it's easier to speak about it in general, like, we'll do it in a phased approach, or we'll do a, you know, grassy field, and then one day do a water feature. But how practical is that? Because I know that we've moved forward through the construction, we've purchased materials. So what is the actual proposal to do it in phases? Or is it to do a redesign, and for city staff, sort of what's the cost and time of a redesign? I know we were anxious to get this park and something there completed, since we have a hole in our downtown, and especially as our economy is at risk, and our businesses and everything is at risk downtown, that really hurts us. So what's the cost and time of the redesign? I know Councilmember Woods had asked, what's the cost of removing any of the construction that has already been done for the existing design? And then what would be the plan? What's the actual proposal for that park? Is it just to have a police substation and a grassy field? You know, or what I see in our parks is we actually have a lot of grassy open space, and people don't use it because it's not shaded and it's too hot. And so when I go to our parks or drive by, I rarely see people in those areas. So I know that people want an event space, that's why the community designed an amphitheater that could be used for free events for the community. But, you know, yeah, so what's the, what's it actually look like to have a grassy field? You know, and what all is included in that? So Marcus, I know that we have, you would have to do a redesign to answer some of those questions, but is there, is it possible to do a phased approach for the park that doesn't waste the materials we've already bought? And then what would be the cost and time of a redesign?
Those are great questions. So we would obviously want to be very thoughtful in how we phase the park construction to minimize or eliminate any overlap and waste of any of these interim improvements. So what I would need to do is work with someone, I hate to say a council subcommittee, but work on reviewing the park plans and identifying the elements of the existing landscape plan, like some of the palm tree groves, or some of the landscape materials, and eliminates, eliminating some of them and replacing it just with a simple lawn. And whether or not we include or not the amphitheater or the event stage at the west end of the park. And we can do this in a way where we're strategic, and we install these improvements so that they're not wasted, and they would work with the, you know, Phase 2, which would be to implement the, you know, the park as it's currently designed. So there's a way to do it. It's difficult at this point in time to tell you what the cost of that is without knowing what that revised or interim landscape plan will look like. The million-dollar estimate was just that, an estimate, assuming it was going to be a very simple lawn with desert landscape. If you want to have some shade trees, or at least some of the palm trees that were part of the landscape plan, we'll have to see essentially how much of those are going to be included in Phase 1, and develop a budget from that, that is within that million-dollar budget that we're going to, that we would have to work with to ensure that we arrive at the $3 million savings that we've estimated.
So what's the current, I'm surprised, what would be completed with the current design?
I'm sorry, what about the current design?
When would it be completed, based on the timeline?
The current schedule, the current schedule has now slipped into December and January, based on the last schedule.
And then how long do you think it would take to work with a liaison or subcommittee and do a redesign? I mean, how many months would that put us out?
Hard to say. I mean, we can arrive at a revised plan quickly. It's, you know, it's just a matter of how many times we need to meet, or if we can arrive at an agreement on a revised plan in the first or two meetings, whatever the process is that council wants to pursue in determining how we get to a revised landscape plan.
I don't think it's anything quickly.
Can I make a suggestion, and just listening to everyone in all these comments, is, one, if we're going to have liaisons, I suggested it be Mayor Protem Holstich and me, since we seem to have very different opinions on this, and that would be good, to try and see where to go from here. We have someone from Budget, and we both, at some point, were liaisons to Parks and Rec, so I think that might be helpful. I would suggest that, because they can meet by Zoom, that we have Parks and Rec meet and Measure J meet. I really would like to hear from them, given what the subcommittees said, because all the money for the neighborhood parks is being used for other things, but to have then all the money go to just the downtown park, sort of Councilmember Garner's point, may not be what they would recommend. So I'd like to hear, because we also said we were going to do these other projects in our neighborhood parks that are now not happening. So I think we want to hear what their recommendations are as well during the next invite, you know, before second meeting in July, come back, having heard from them, and having had time for the staff to look at what the different cost deltas are, and if this could be done phased, or more could be done in a couple of years. I think there's some relevant information we in public probably need to have that might be helpful. So just an idea.
If that's the council's will, I'm happy to serve on that. You know, again, I think we've had a lot of public comment, we talked about the park, we got a lot of letters on the issue in our first few meetings. So I'm not quite sure, you know, the purpose of getting more of that, but I appreciate that. I'm just wondering from the subcommittee, why is the park proposal included in this? So, about that discussion. So is it to get to the amount of reserves that we had, that you had originally proposed? Or why is the park in this?
I think, I think for a couple of reasons. One is not to go into the restricted reserves, that, you know, a couple councils ago, we committed to, you know, 6.5 million a year into that CalPERS fund. We're not even where we should be with the 22 million. We probably should be at 26 million in this budget. And the reality is, that money's coming. We have 325 million in unfunded liabilities for retirees. Some is CalPERS, some is Health, and we know those costs are coming. And we wanted to put that money away and only use it with a supermajority vote, because it's really borrowing from our future generations. Someone's going to have to pay for that at some point. You know, our budget at this point is like 30-plus percent debt payments. Between, you know, 26, you know, to 30 million, we're going to be paying for retiree costs and the Gulf Corps bond and Measure J, you know, those are just debt things, debt. So that's why we did that at the time, and those costs aren't going away. And so, given the comments at the last council meeting, and seeing what we're seeing, where, you know, who believes the worst of COVID is ahead of us, and we're hearing so much that the governor's saying more restrictions are going to be coming down, the economy could be worse than this projection that we have. And we don't want to then have to do the cuts that we are avoiding right now. And so, yeah, we wanted to have more reserves. Plus, at least for me, it was concern from hearing from the Measure J and Parks and Rec subcommittees, that they don't believe this is the right use of those funds anymore. They're losing other projects that they think are more important, and they think should be paid for more critical things right now. So it was those two for me. I'll let Councilmember Middleton speak for what her motivation is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You said it quite well. We don't know where we are going to be three months from now. And I think taking and pulling this $3 million out is the right thing to do today, to be cautious, to be prudent. Ultimately, we have a beautifully designed park that need, I hope will get built, and I believe will be built. But we need to balance this budget and make sure that if the economy goes south again, if we have to impose, or the governor or the county impose more severe restrictions on the economy, that we're able to withstand that crisis. And so I think the smart thing to do right now is to defer making an investment in the $3 million we were going to do for the park. And I hate having to go there, but I just think it is the responsible thing to do.
Councilmember Woods.
First of all, I want to applaud Mayor Protem. You know, we made, well, before I got on, you know, Measure J was passed, and there's a commitment to our infrastructure. And I understand that this budget is a compromise because of the situation we're in, but we're giving up on a certain vision that Measure J was giving us. And not, I don't want to give up on it, I want to say it's delayed. And I know even street maintenance, you know, it comes at a cost, a long-term cost to delay street maintenance. And I just think keeping a vision for the city is so important. If we want to maintain services for our rec programs, for our, for our public safety programs, for our building department programs, we are, we have not changed, we are a tourist economy. We need to also invest in making sure that we are a desirable destination and a safe destination for people to come. So I don't want, I want to keep that in mind, that it's really important to have investments, you know, in a place that people gather, such as downtown. It may not be as soon as we want. I don't know, is we need a subcommittee liaison meeting with all of these different agencies? I think what we need to do is just say, what is it going to cost? What does it take to get us there? Two liaisons can do that, along with city staff, and shepherd it along, because it's Quimby fees, which has to be used for new parks anyway. So I, you know, when we look at the budget, I think it's a holistic thing. I don't think we're taking from one and the other. They all are interrelated to one another, and we have to somewhat understand that interrelationship in this entire process. I think we've gotten to a spot that understands that interrelationship, including the park. And that's all I have to say. So I would be supportive of a slower process to the park, but not one that's going to take away from the overall branding of the city of Palm Springs.
Were you speaking, Councilmember Middleton? Because you're muted, if you were.
I was commenting, and I thought Councilmember Woods said that very well.
One more quick question, just to move us forward. Let's set the park aside for a second. So are we all good? And I'll ask Councilmember Garner, Mayor Protem Holstich. We really, we picked $150,000 on, call it, safety process, and it may be more, it may be less. So if you had a number in mind that was different, or we could use that for now and come back as the two, you and the chief, you know, start looking at who you'd want to bring in, and whatever process you want to put forward?
I think, you know, we don't have, without having put out requests.
Right.
And it's hard to say what the cost would be. I think that's a fair number, I think, to start with. And I imagine that it would probably either be, you know, a little less or a little more. I can't imagine it being much more, and most likely less. So I think, I think that's reasonable.
So if, so if everyone's good, we'll keep that in. And it sounded like everyone's good on the 850,000 for the body cameras. I think everyone's good for one month of CEBEP and have them in in July. And I know Councilmember Garner, you're the liaison, so you could work, reach out to them on that. Those are the definite things. I share the view that we want to open the skate park, because we can do it. I don't know if we have to put money in the budget now, or bring that back at the time. So we could put some money in now. But I want to get a sense of the city manager, or Councilmember Garner, on what we want to do there.
Sure. If I could comment on that, Mayor? Councilmember Garner, please.
No, no, actually, I want to hear from you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. With regard to the skate park, why would it be important, I think, to have a commitment if you want to go forward with that? Why would it be important today is because the contractor, in essence, they have their pro shop. And if we're not going to go forward, they need to vacate it, and we would then repurpose that. So, but if, in theory, we would probably be opening in a month or two, even if it's that distance out, we would need to be able to be assured of some sort of funding for that contract, so we could keep them ready to go once we do open.
Councilmember Garner.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I support that, and I also think, you know, we, I believe the number was $90,000. It's not a huge amount, and we do, as has been mentioned already, we do see cost savings throughout the year, and I feel like that's probably one that we can, we can meet.
Yeah, I can, I can support that. I don't think it'll be, because it's not going to open right away, but I think we should put money in the budget, so they know that it's going to open, if that's okay with everyone, given what the city manager just shared.
And I would note, counsel, the contract was 180, but based on working with them, they did submit a new contract with the reduction, so that is how we ended up with the 90,000.
And do you think, given, it's probably not going to at least open the next month, should we do 11 months of it? I know we're splitting hairs, but we can, you know.
Sure, that would be fine, yeah. That's reasonable.
As far as the economic development positions, you know, I think there's a majority who wants to see those. Is the best way to do this for you to, when you have something, bring it back to us, knowing that we want to see that, and continue on the efforts, versus you want to put a certain amount in now, what do you recommend?
Mayor, my suggestion on that is, there's probably, the five positions that were reduced in that department, probably the three that we need to cover, obviously, is the economic development, the larger focus there, which is the deputy, deputy city manager's position, also the housing, and the central business district administrator. Probably, we have Probably, we have funding, we're set in part of that, but probably the two positions is what we would actually need funding for, which would be probably two to three positions, probably three, about almost half a million dollars for those positions. What we could do is, is once we have candidates, if we find the right candidates, we could come back and then you just have a supplemental appropriation from fund balance. But probably what's more advisable now, just in terms of planning, if those positions are important, to go ahead and put them in the budget. Obviously, if we are not able to find candidates, that money would just be returned to the general fund.
Mayor Protam Hostage.
Thank you. I very much think that we should fund those positions right now, at least allocate some amount of money to do that. What we're hearing from our stakeholders, our local businesses, is that they need support right now. And I think the central business district coordinator or a role like that, that will be a liaison to small businesses and keep them, help keep, connect them to services or help keep them in business and preserve that revenue for the city, I think that would be really important. I know the other position might be more difficult to hire, but I do think we've talked a lot about, and I think the majority of the council has said, we have to make investments. Like Councilmember Woods said, we can't cut off our nose to save our face. And I think economic development is one of those items that we need to invest in.
So I agree that these are important positions. And this is where we get into the delta, right? If we do this and we're gonna spend the full amount on the park, we're bringing our reserves closer to, you know, eighteen million, which means in this time period, we're using two-thirds of reserves and hoping for the best. And I just think that's too risky, given the situation we're in. I don't think we can do all of it. Now, that may be different in September when the books are closed and we see where the economy is. But I'm really worried about our reserves going now back down, given, I know last Thursday we were all concerned about having more reserves. And then now all of a sudden we're dropping them, you know, more than into the restricted reserves, which I, I'm not gonna be comfortable with. I'm just, that's just my view. Because I really do worry, as Councilmember Woods said, if the economy is worse than our projections and we have another shutdown, then we're starting to close, cut even more. And we've already cut eighty-two positions. And, you know, it took a lot of work and concessions from our bargaining units to be able to keep the programs in our community centers and the library through them not taking their rates, which is gonna come in a year. And the extra CalFos payments are coming in a year. And that's my concern. It's, I think we're going too much into reserves. I agree those are important, but I want to see something else reduced somewhere.
Yeah, can we, sorry, can we go over just the math of it? So I know the city manager presented at the beginning that there was additional revenue of one point six million to the general fund.
Yeah, he got us about.
The initial proposals of expenditures included was one point one, and we've cut those. So where are we at? Maybe for staff following along, or I don't know, Mayor, you wanted to add in there.
Well, what I have on, I don't know if you want to do it, Marcus, but we had just under nineteen million dollars in reserves. With the extra money, we got to about twenty million, five hundred thousand. Is that about right? We're about two million short of the restricted reserves. And then we're adding back about a million, a little over a million. So that puts us back to about eighteen, nineteen million, so about three million below, I think. But Marcus, what do you have in front of you?
Yeah, I mean, you're back down around to the eighteen, nineteen million fund balance. Setting aside the three million that we talked about for the park.
Including what numbers for the item? Can you add it up? Because we're talking about economic development positions in general without assigning an amount to that.
So on the economic development, so, let's see, what I would recommend there, one, two, three, four hundred and seventy-five thousand for those positions. So Marcus, if you want to calculate that. And we have one point six million in new revenue that we're indicating today. And then we have the skate park at, which would probably be, say, eighty, since it's not gonna be the full year. C-Vep, IHUB, the one month at twenty-seven thousand. And then the police body cameras. So my finance director, I think.
And the safety expert work at one fifty.
Correct. So that's one fifty.
Glad you're doing the math, Councilmember Middleton.
David, the four seventy-five that you're talking about for the economic positions, is that a twelve-month figure? Because there is no way you're going to fill those positions quickly.
Yes, that is a good point, Councilmember Middleton, because there will be salary savings in there. We will not get those fully in place. It will take a few months, but that would be the ongoing annual cost. So, but in this fiscal year, I would say you probably would, could have probably about three seventy-five in the current fiscal year by the time we get them on board.
And that's assuming you fill all of those.
Correct.
I think, I'm not sure you can, you're even going to need three seventy-five, but if we can make the math work, I'm comfortable with that. But again, you've still got to find the talent that we need.
And then the additional money from the state, so Mayor, did he say that was six seventy-five?
No, it's five ninety-eight. It has to be used for specific purposes. I mean, we can't use it necessarily for our budget. Some of it may be able to be used to cover some of code enforcement or overtime things. Actually, my recommendation on that is gonna be that we bring that back when we have all the details at the next meeting. And actually, that we continue the CDBG at the next meeting because we might be able to switch some funding. Because that has to be used by the end of the year while there are things that we might need to fund, you know, permanently through a CDBG. So I think we want to look at those together, once we have that data, if that works for folks. I was gonna wait, but since you brought that up. Because we're not sure exactly, we have to evaluate, could that help us with our budget numbers or not, right?
So I just, if I can, I just want to say, I think that we're in a good place here with these, it sounds like there's consensus or we're unanimous on some of these items. And so it sounds like it's bound to the reserve amount and a vote on that. But I do want to say, and it's hard when we adjourn these meetings, is that we heard from residents asking us to look at our police budget and why it's over a third of our budget for the city, and asking us not to cut things like Parks and Rec and economic development and incentives for the city and amenities for residents. And then here, it looks like what we're doing is talking about cutting a park, cutting, you know, talking about the skate park, talking about how we can find and not find money for economic development. And I just want to lift up all the voices and the residents who called in and wanted to be involved in this process, many of whom had never been involved in city council or called in before, many of whom were younger, that we recognize and, you know, act on those calls for action. And I'm not sure if we're doing that right now.
So I appreciate that and I appreciate the calls. I would say since then and even before then, we got a lot of emails and personal calls with different views in that, and we represent everyone. I very much heard those voices and I think we're trying to address them. And, you know, I'd be much more inclined to dip into the restricted reserves, to do things in neighborhood parks than build the over-the-top downtown park that is gonna be, I think, more for tourists than it is for residents. So, and it always was, right? I mean, that was part of it to drive, because it would help drive the economy. That was the thought. And, you know, I worked with Parks and Rec. I was their liaison when we worked on how we get more bathrooms in the parks, how we do a full look at Sunrise Park, how we can really expand that. You know, I don't think we have the funds to do it right now, but that would be my next priority. And I want to hear from the commissions. That's why I want to hear from the commissions, because, you know, a decision was made when money was coming in, we were at our highest budgets ever, there, you know, things were really going well. It's changed. And I think if we want to really focus on the community, I'm not sure it's to do the all bells and whistles downtown park right now. It might be, but I don't know that that is the case. And I think when the decision was made, and it was less extensive than it is now, to do the park, because of all the garage issues, and we know the other side, for the sculpture garden, we're gonna have garage issues and all the other costs coming up, you know, I think if people knew the trade-off was that full park and the road's not getting paved and we're not putting bathrooms in neighborhood parks, we might not have the same results. And so I'd rather see those things. And that's just me personally. But I think to just, because we agreed to something, we agreed to other things we're cutting. So we're just kicking without hearing from the commissions that we appointed to do this. And we did hear from their two subcommittees who are unanimous in their view, which is to do a reduced park, given our situation. So I hear what you're saying, I'm just saying my view is different on that. And I don't think we can just say because someone wanted something that there aren't a lot of other people who feel differently. That's all.
Oh, God.
Go ahead, Councilmember Garner.
I don't know, I'm uncomfortable with this conversation because for the last two years, we've been talking about doing more investments in our community and in our parks. And I'm still uncomfortable with the idea of not moving forward with the downtown park, but also not reinvesting that money in the community somewhere else. And that's where you've lost me. And I think that there was kind of probably a desire to get me on board by saying, we're not gonna do downtown parks. But the problem is that we're still not doing something for our residents. And, I mean, one of the things when I was campaigning was, what about the park? What about our parks? You know, what about the fact that our water features don't work at the parks on Sunrise Park or the others? And what about the fact that James L. Jesse still doesn't have a bathroom, that all the other parks need bathroom updates? I just have a very hard time. I feel like things are giving, are being given weight now that weren't being given weight before. And that's, that's difficult for me because people have been saying these things for a long time. And it seems like all of a sudden it's being used as an excuse to pass the budget. And I'm just deeply uncomfortable with that. So I would like to either see the downtown park go forward, or I would like to see that money reinvested in the community. And I'm not comfortable with just saying, oh, well, we'll see what happens.
And I hear you. And actually, I advocated for the funding for our neighborhood parks. And I would rather, I think we need to hold more reserves until we get our books balanced in September. But I'd be more than prepared to vote if we have an extra three million dollars, that it goes to what Parks and Rec and Measure J recommended for our neighborhood parks before it goes to the all bells and whistles downtown. I strongly support that. I agree with you. I don't want to kick that aside. Be more than happy voting that if we have more money coming in, that would be our next priority. So I don't mean to say I don't want to do that. I would rather do that. I would rather do the, finish something downtown if it is a savings of three million dollars as Assistant City Manager Thing says, and when the books are closed or the economy goes up, I would make that our next priority. What Measure J and the Parks and Rec Commission had approved in community projects, which is all for downtown parks. I advocated that the whole time I was on council. So I worked with them on it. I went to their retreat on it. And so I do want to respond that it's not that I don't want to do that. That would be a higher priority than the water feature and two thousand plants in the downtown park would be, that that would be next. And I would vote for that right now as the next use of funding. So someone clear on where I am. Mayor Protam Hostage.
Just really briefly, I agree with Councilmember Garner. This has become like a park versus park. Like, we can only invest in one park conversation, which I don't think anyone wants to have or means to have. And I also support investing in our other parks and looking for savings. So I appreciate that. But what we're doing is looking at our overall budget. And I raised, you know, Parks and Rec is like five to seven percent of our overall budget. So here we are fighting for scraps, you know, about Parks and Rec as opposed to looking at our funding overall as a city and, you know, what's going to public safety, what's going to general government services, what's going to salaries versus services for residents? I mean, that's the budget conversation. So I also am uncomfortable in this place we've gotten, which I don't think anyone wanted to, is like, let's pit one park against the other because we really want to invest in Parks and Rec, even in a bad economy, because people need it now more than ever. They can't afford to go to the movies or go somewhere, and a lot of those places are closed and they need parks more. So I just wanted to frame that, that, you know, we can just step back and really look at like, what's our goal here together? Because I do think that we have a lot of agreement and not, you know, fight over a more controversial piece of it, which is easier to do than the big picture.
So after all of these weeks and all of these discussions, I think we're down to about a three million dollar discussion. And everyone wants to see more money going into the parks. The money that goes into reserve is money that we can bring back out of reserve. And I, I'll come back to where I've been. The prudent thing to do is to keep the money in a reserve right now and come back with in a month and in two months and in three months and see where we are in terms of revenue and expenses. And see where we are after we complete the listening sessions and the work of an advisory group and the work of a consultant in a review of our public safety. A holistic review of our public safety. And I think Councilmember Garner said it quite well. It looks at all of the different elements of what will keep us safe. And that is something for which there are extremely strong opinions in our community. But there is not alignment in our community as to what is the path forward. And let's have the conversation so that we can try to get that alignment. So I would like to make a motion that we proceed with the budget, adding three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the economic development, but coming in with a reserve that will be in excess of twenty-two million dollars. That we do not move forward with the three million dollars for the park. We do move forward with the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the body cameras. We move forward with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation for a consultant I'm not sure if I missed anything.
Uh, one month for C-Vep.
Uh, thank you, yes.
Uh, Councilmember Middleton, did you want to include one month of funding for C VAP?
Uh, yes, I did. Thank you.
Joe, can someone read that off and what the total reserve would be?
Yeah. So, what, what I have is, is the, the cameras eight, the, the, the total is, I see it as 1.4, 1,482,000. And that's, and, and if, if I got this correct, it's 850 for the cameras, 80 for the skate park, 27 for C VAP, 150,000 for the, uh, police review. And then if you figure 375 for the economic development positions, that is the 1 point, And, and I would note just for, uh, uh, the, the record, uh, C VAP is, is indicated that one month would be problematic for them, that at a minimum, uh, two months would probably be what their request is to keep both facilities open. But that's just, uh, and that, that's just information that, uh, was texted to me from the, uh, director of the IUP, C VAP.
I, I don't think we have that additional month right now and, uh, but we'll certainly sit down with Joe and talk with him, uh, in a month and, uh, see whether or not, uh, June's, uh, T O T numbers, uh, create a, a miracle. But I, I don't see that right now.
So, do we have a total? Did I miss, are we, where that leaves our reserves? So, we know if we need three or four votes? At this point? Or five?
Uh, maybe that was a question for the city attorney?
No, it's probably for our finance director, right? What is our reserve if we?
Well, well, if I, Nancy, please, please step, step in here. But what, so if we have 1,482 in new expenses, we have 1,006 in revenue, that's going to put a couple hundred thousand, or about a hundred and, a little over 100,000 back to the 18.9?
19.1 million, we're at.
19.1. Thank you.
Is that with taking 3 million out of the park?
And that's before, before the park. The park would add an additional 3 million.
So, that would get us to 22.5, so we're just 100, a little, uh, over 100,000 short. It appears to be restricted reserve, it sounds like. And that's what I'm trying to get. Are we in the restricted reserve or not? And if we are, by how much?
Thank you.
Mayor, so, uh, if, if the issue is keeping above 22,250,000, we are about 150,000 short if you add in the 3 million for the downtown park.
So, I would modify that, uh, that we, uh, take 150,000, uh, out of the 375 for the economic positions, given that, uh, it's going to take much long, it's going to take time to fill those positions in order to get to, uh, the right number.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woods.
Um, I'll second that vote with a lot of caveats, um, on that vote. Um, or second that motion, excuse me. Um, we need to come to some sort of a, an agreement tonight, um, or I believe our charter leaves it up to our city manager to come up with something. Um, so, it's incumbent upon us to work together with one another to try to come up with something. We have done an enormous amount of outreach in our meetings, um, with the, the public and heard back. Um, we've heard all different sides, you know, and that's the hard part of our job is distinguishing which way we end up going here. Um, my caveats are, well, another thing I want to say is that the good thing about this budget is that, you know, through some of our CBDG money, we are actually funding some improvements at Demuth Park, which I'm very happy about. Um, so, you know, we are, there is some movement to make that happen. I do think it is important for us to look at the bigger picture of efficiency. Um, so I think it's very important that we have that money in there and that for kind of looking at overall efficiencies of our department's work, and I know the focus has been on police, but I think it's, it's, it's more than that. And I think whatever recommendations comes out of that is that this body also wants to implement those recommendations, whatever that may be. I think that is going to be another very important part. Um, I can, you know, if we can get private money for our downtown park, that would be fantastic. I know there's been a lot of input. This is an opportunity for people who are opposed to the park to step up. I get it. Um, but if we can get an interim of a park without wasting money to, uh, full fruition, if our economy bounces back, I, I can, can support that. Um, I think it's incumbent upon us really to look at all these diverse opinions that we're getting. And I think we've gotten to a point that I can second the vote with confidence from Councilmember Middleton. Thank you.
So, with that, we have a motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Woods. Uh, Councilmember Garner, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the, I mean, the, the caveats that you were trying to bring into that. Is it, I, can you just explain more, Councilmember Woods, on, do you, are you proposing that, um, we, we still do move forward in, in a, in a modified way with the park that's more robust than just the grassy lawn and supplement it with, um, community fundraising?
So, so, well, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Gardner, Councilmember Gardner, I appreciate that. Now, I'm recommending that what we do is, is move forward with a rendition of the park that it would save us $3 million, um, is, right? And that, but that what we do is it's built out in such a way that it can be added to in the future, um, as, and as we either find money through private enterprise and/or our economy becomes more robust. Um, so, I'm, thank you.
Is it possible to get a commitment from council that, um, once we reach a certain level of income coming into our city, that it goes to the park, to completing the park in conjunction with doing fundraising efforts? Would that be something that we could add to the motion? And what would that number be that we would feel comfortable having come in to then deliver it to the park?
I'm comfortable with the concept of that. I'm not sure what that number, uh, would be, but I, I appreciate exactly where you're trying to go. And I, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that. I just don't know, uh, what number to give it.
I'm curious what others think of that?
Um, I mean, I'm definitely open to it if it comes through philanthropy. I don't know what number in the economy, given, you know, what are the projects? And the reason I said I wanted to hear from Parks and Rec and Measure J is a lot of those projects got cut or reduced. And I want to hear their recommendations, uh, before I make a decision on what the next funding streams are. Um, there are other, you know, there are two community projects that went through a lot of vetting, a lot of community input on parks, that I want to hear what they have to say, because I might prefer to have those funded before more stuff on the park. So, I'm not prepared to say the next 3 million goes to that, uh, Measure J and Parks, because then we're getting rid of actually the community projects, which work for neighborhood parks. So, I'm not prepared to do that, but I'm open to it. But I really would like to hear from those two commissions, where the residents can weigh in on what their priorities are for the next funding for Measure J and Parks and Rec. That's just me, that's me.
Mayor, am I hearing you say then that after review with Parks and Rec, that we would then be able to put some of that 3 million dollars that we're setting aside in reserves tonight into either the downtown park project or our neighborhood parks, based on the recommendation from our commissions and communities?
Sure. I, I would be, I think what I would be comfortable with is that if, um, the next phase of, if our funding comes in when we close the books, that's a great way to look at it with our economy, and there's an extra 2 to 3 million dollars, I'd want to hear it first from Measure J and Parks and Rec on either going forward with the community projects or the downtown park. But I'd want them to weigh in and the community weigh in before we decide which one. But I'd commit that it would go to parks, because that was what both of them wanted for the next community projects to be. So, I would be comfortable with that in the motion.
And what would that number be that we're committing to? A portion of that 3 million? All of that 3 million?
So, Marcus, how much was, I believe we had two years of million dollar each in the parks, right? $2 million in community projects being recommended?
Uh, that's correct. A million a year, and I believe it was programmed for parks.
Um, you know, I need the fact that we're seeing that. Oh. I didn't hear that. Or is that just the echo?
The echo.
Okay. Um, um, look, I think that's the next thing, is to, is to go back to the Measure J projects and the community projects. So, for me, the next million or two that comes in, as long as we're keeping our restricted reserve, I would, I would use for those. But I'd want to hear from them first, that that's their priority. They may, Measure J and the park, Parks and Rec may say they'd rather do the downtown park first. I want to hear from them and the community on that priority. But I would prioritize, for me, what the community projects in Measure J were, because that had a lot of community input, but I know the downtown park did as well. So, I would probably just say that the next 2 million go into parks, and we hear from Measure J and Parks and Rec on their recommendation. Then we can have it come to council, hear from the community, and we can make that decision.
How do others feel about that?
I'm good with that. I, I have a hard time with it, um, because I don't know what the future holds. I don't know what the future holds for us. You know, um, I'm, um, I'm on board with wanting to finish the downtown park, um, absolutely on board with that. But I just don't know if, if it's going to take two years to come out of this and our roads are crumbling, you know, our, our parks, you know, where we might want to be at that point, um, in it. But I do like the concept, um, Councilmember Gardner, um, it just, I'm not sure how to put that into a motion without pre-committing us.
There's got to be language that will do that.
Yes, I understand what we are saying is that, uh, the next $3 million over and above, uh, projected revenue and expenses, we are dedicating to, uh, go to parks.
But at what point? In other words, my, our books are closed, when the audit's done, because the, you know, it's this year, but what's the right, I mean, that's a good question for the city manager or finance director. When will we really know where we are from la- from last year and the start of the next, the fiscal year, where we could feel comfortable that, yes, we definitely have an extra $3 million in revenue than we projected?
So, I, I would say by probably, and Nancy, I'll, I'll let you, um, give, give your best advice here on, on the closes, what, late July or early August?
Well, actually, um, we have our sales tax revenue that comes in two months behind. So, in, um, July and August, we'll be collecting May and June. So, I'd probably say, um, the first week in September.
Now, that would be the definitive first week in September. We, we, uh, that, that would be the definitive. We can make some fairly good inferences in, in, in mid-August, I would think, but definitively , uh, early September.
Can I just ask a question? Do they know, at least this last year, when we did the audit, the numbers were different than where we were in September? In a good way, by the way, so that's good. So, will we be confident that when the audit happens, it will be in a positive direction, or at least where it was, but not in negative direction? Because this year it was very positive, right? We found more money in the audit than what we knew in June or September.
And again, not knowing entirely, but, you know, we were starting to get a little hopeful, uh, but if, if, if we go back towards a, a fuller, uh, shutdown again, that, that is going to obviously affect, um, the balance of, of the summer and into early fall. So, it's just really hard to say right now.
Okay. But it sounds like September, we should have a better idea on where we are financially.
Yes.
I don't know if that's helpful for your motion, Councilmember Middleton?
Yes, it is. Uh, and, uh, I don't know if this will be a traditional August in which we are dark. Uh, we haven't done anything traditional this year. Uh, but, uh, September is, uh, is a very good place for us to check in, uh, with where we're at. And, uh, I think we're making a commitment, uh, that, uh, when we have $3 million more than what we are projecting, that money is going into parks.
So, that's the new motion, or addition to the motion, which Councilmember Woods, I think, agreed to, which means you're seconding the friendly amendment, um, to that.
I can, I can second that, uh, that friendly amendment. I'm, uh, thank you for coming up with a resolution to it and...
Councilmember Garner?
Just, just one thing about this for, while we're on it, um, I'm really glad that we're going to talk to Measure J and Parks and Rec, but I also want to make sure that, um, when we're, as we're going through this process, since it's going to be month to month, that we're thinking about those players, um, along the way, because I think they should have probably been a part of this conversation earlier, and that's on all of us for not having done that.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to, to put that out there, to make sure that we're giving our commissions the, the full attention that they deserve.
Yeah. And I think when the commissions meet and do this, especially because these will be on Zoom, that we do a lot of outreach to the public and our residents, um, so they can weigh in, um, at those meetings. Because in the past, some, a lot of those were during the day when people couldn't do it. But if they're in the evenings and they're on Zoom, it will really give our community an opportunity to weigh in and make public comment, which I think is helpful. Mayor Proton Holstich, should you have?
Councilmember Woods can go.
Okay. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I, I also think as we get those, as we get them, as we get Parks and Recs and Measure J up and running again, I know when I've been on commissions, it wasn't just reacting and voting on things, it was actually getting your hands dirty and rolling up your sleeves in a commission. And I really would like to see these commissions, especially Parks and Rec, to look at models in other cities and what they're doing, um, especially with the funding sources or maybe sponsorships or whatever it may be, to take our parks to another level, or at least get them to a level that works. And I just would like to see them turn into more of a working group, um, um, to, to really do some of the research that's needed to get us to a better place than where we're at today. So, I think it takes a little bit of council providing some direction to those commissions as they get up and running versus them just reacting to whatever's happening at the moment.
Mayor Proton Holstich?
Thank you. Um, this is our discussion time before we vote. So, I just wanted to say I'm going to vote no on the motion. Um, I don't think that the budget as presented represents our values and what we heard from all residents. Uh, we had a lot of resident input throughout this whole process. Um, and I appreciate where we've gotten to, and I think it's a really good place. Um, but still, these cuts are coming from a park, it's coming from economic development, um, it's coming from C VAP, which is one of the only regional entities that does regional economic development. Um, and then we're talking about, you know, investments in parks that we could have made for a long time. We're not talking about, you know, half of our budget goes to public safety, or, you know, almost half goes to government services, and so few goes to Parks and Rec. And I think that's really important. So, I appreciate all the work, I appreciate the budget subcommittee's work on this, um, I appreciate the movement to try to make sure that that money goes, um, into parks. But I think that if we're not actually committing it in a budget which reflects our values, I mean, we're not actually raising up and lifting up the comments that we've heard again and again from residents, um, at the last council meeting, and it's not even on the table, um, to talk about some of those issues. I mean, we're not funding, um, body cameras from the department that it goes to. I think that's a huge concern for me. And so, I appreciate that I can, this vote will have three fifths or four fifths vote. I'm not sure the final count, we'll find out. Um, and I appreciate, you know, most 90% of what's in this budget, um, but I just don't think, you know, I'm not convinced that more process... know, I'm not convinced that more process will help us here or get to that point. And I just don't think it reflects our community's overall values or what we heard. Not enough was done on that. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no.
I appreciate your sharing your reasons. I think it's important to have that on the record. If you had, have a counter-specific proposal, you know, please make it. You know, I can think of lots more things I want to spend money on, but you know, I think this is all we've got, but I'm always open throughout this for someone else making a proposal. We came with one, made some changes based on what we heard. If there are other cuts you want to make, you know, you talk about government services, you talk about other things, are there specific positions you want to cut? We've gone through personnel and the list many times. Please make them.
Sure, and we had. So Councilmember Garner and I had made a proposal that was similar to yours. I think that we had expressed that it's a value decision about what comes to reserves from reserves and what stays in there. I appreciate that we want to keep that in there. But we had a proposal, it didn't include the park. And just so you know, I don't think that this is just about the downtown park, because I agree with you that it's highly expensive. If I had chosen what to invest it in, it would have, might have been different if I had been on city council at the time. I wasn't, but I think it was a promise we made to residents to invest their money in amenities and services for residents. And that's what's really important to me. So I think we're kind of talking around it, you know, where could the cuts come from? You know, and I think that we just need to look at other options. And so we have proposed that the body cameras come from the cost savings from the police department as opposed over the next year in working with the city manager and the police chief, as opposed to making all those cuts from this one lump of money that we have right now. You know, and so we attempted to do that work with a proposal.
I may, Mr. Mayor. We just, you know, the last meeting, there was an indication that the body cameras would come from the police budget. How did that change, or why did it change? And maybe that's a question of staff more than the budget subcommittee.
Yeah. We never heard where that was coming from, so we just wanted it in the budget. Hey, David.
Sure, sure to answer that question. The chief did, and he's here to answer any, answering specific questions if you have. The chief did look at that. However, it was going to be several additional positions that would have to be removed. So it, that, Chief, actually, why don't you explain the result, that additional 850,000? Thank you.
Good evening, council. Councilmember Woods, I did in fact go back, look at my line items, and simply the money's not there. What I did is at the close of the fiscal year, I gave back a total of $550,000 in my line items that does not return during this new fiscal year, where I had some flexibility. So the flexibility in regards to my line items are not there. If we do go forward with the, coming out of the PD budget, it's going to result in the release of three sworn officers and three support staff to come up with that 850,000.
Thank you, chief. Protem, I think you said that you didn't want to do that. Not that you didn't want to come from police, but you didn't want to make those. At this point, you didn't have other recommendations for how to fund that?
The proposal initially from the city manager was, and he can speak for himself if he has recommendations here, was that we would likely see cost savings over the year from the police department and could take the cost of body cameras from that. I thought this council or this mayor might not be supportive of that, because we like to see where the money's coming from. But that would be the way to make sure that it comes from the department which it serves. But yes, councilman, the list that we got, and you know, we got one list of one, this is going to be the impact of that level cut, affected a lot of staff that, you know, we didn't want to see cut. So that's sort of where we're at. I do think it should come from the police budget, because it's for that department. And if it's not coming from that department, it's coming from other departments. So, you know, that was my position at least, and that was the consensus of the council. And we, just to be clear, so we brought forward a consensus sort of proposal. So we heard from the last council meeting, consensus that we need to fund body cameras and consensus from the majority that it should come from the police department. And so that's what we brought forward, and that's what we were talking to the city manager about how to do that. We didn't bring, you know, other items that people called for in public comment, because we thought that was the consensus of the council, and that's what could get approved tonight, along with commitment or action that you included in your proposal as well.
And so for the city manager, if there are 850,000 or some amount of that in the police budget, that would then be freed up and we could use for other things. Is that right?
It wasn't specifically the question, Mayor, from the police department or from other, citywide?
So if it turns out as you think that there'll be 850,000 in cost savings over the year in police, that money could be freed up and not kept in the police budget, but be used for other things, sort of to meet what council had discussed.
Yeah. So let's just say, let's presume for a moment that we didn't have all these other issues swirling around. And council said, we want the cameras, city manager, figure out how to get the cameras from the police department budget. In a normal year, you're right, the city manager, this is the mobilizing prudence move, that as we move through the year, there's going to be salary savings in police, there's going to be salary savings in other departments, and also salary savings in police from all the other expenditures. At the end of the year, they'll probably net out maybe half a million dollars, a little more. The bit of the problem this year, though, is because we've already cut significant amount out on the operations side, the non-personnel side, those savings may not materialize. We will have savings probably on the personnel side as vacancies come and we don't get them filled right away, but we wouldn't get that highest level from the police department itself. I would, I would probably sense citywide, we would have that amount of savings. So in a normal year, that's how I would approach it. Figure it out.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. So I think at this point, we have a motion by Councilmember Middleton, a second by Councilmember Woods. Why don't we do a vote and see where we are?
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods? Councilmember Garner?
No.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
No.
Mayor Corse? Motion passes 3 to 2, and I defer to the city attorney to confirm that that's the vote necessary for this motion to pass.
Yes, because we did not touch the pension reserve fund, a supplementary decision.
Why don't we take a 10-minute break? We've got two hours, and come back at 8:45. Is that enough, everyone? Yeah. Okay. Let's take a 10-minute break.
Welcome back, everyone. And we now have 2B, which is the Community Development Block Grant, 2025 Five-Year Consolidated Plan. I won't read it all, only because my suggestion is that we continue that to our next meeting as part, and I don't know if we can do it together or before or after, we have a discussion and presentation on the state funding we're getting and what exactly that can be used for. And I think we probably should do that first because that may impact how we want to spend the CDBG funding, since state funding has to be used during this calendar year. Well, CDBG is fiscal year of permanent infrastructure. So people good with moving that to that meeting so we have that other information from the state funding? Any objections? Okay. So we'll move that. Do you need a motion, Anthony, or are we good?
Yes, just so we can have that set to a date certain so we don't have to renotice.
Okay. So the motion would be, hold on, what's the date certain? July 9th, is it?
July 9th.
Oh, no, I'm in the wrong month. July 9th, okay. So the motion would be to move item 2B to date to the council meeting of July 9th. I'm happy to make it. Second?
Second.
Motion by Mayor Corz, second by Councilmember Middleton.
Mayor Corz?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next item is our one legislative item, consideration of adopting an urgency ordinance to extend the temporary moratorium on evictions resulting from non-payment of rent when non-payment was caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Staff report, I believe, City Attorney Ballinger.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you tonight is a consideration of possibly extending the city's protections under the eviction moratorium that the City Council adopted in April. As the Council will recall, shortly after the city and governor's closure orders in March, the City Council adopted a ordinance on March 19th that provided for about a week and a half of relief whereby tenants would not be served with three-day notices to pay or quit. On April 2nd, the City Council adopted an ordinance in its current form, which essentially delayed payment of rent by tenants if the tenants could demonstrate that they had COVID-related financial difficulties. As the Council will recall, the ordinance, like many other cities' ordinances, does not forgive the rent, it simply delays the payment until some time period after the emergency is over. That ordinance was set to expire, the protections were set to expire at the end of May. The City Council agreed in May to extend it to the end of June, and so that is the reason we're bringing it before you tonight. In terms of how the city's eviction moratorium ordinance fits into other statewide protections, the Council will recall that in March, the governor issued an executive order that allowed for cities to adopt these types of eviction moratorium ordinances. Dozens of these throughout California adopted them, including Palm Springs. That order is still in effect. There was a second executive order issued later in March by the governor, and that order actually delayed the processing of eviction cases. It also prevented sheriffs from actually executing on any eviction orders from the court. That second emergency order from the governor has since expired, but the first one is still in effect. In addition, the Judicial Council of California, essentially the administrative arm of the California courts, has issued a court rule that also delays processing of eviction cases that were filed after April 6th. So there are other protections that tenants have even if the Council were to allow this emergency, or this urgency ordinance to expire. And finally, I'll note that within the last two weeks, two lawsuits have been filed, one against the city of Los Angeles, which has an ordinance that, in my opinion, goes a bit further than Palm Springs and most other cities. And then just today, a similar lawsuit was filed by the Department Owners Association of San Francisco against San Francisco's ordinance. And so we are seeing that those organizations are getting more litigious. And so what's before you tonight, again, is just consideration of whether the Council wants to extend the protections of the moratorium past June 30th. If the Council takes no action, then those protections will expire, and within 180 days, tenants will have to start paying back their rent. That concludes my staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
I do have a quick question, just, I know there's a federal, I think it was 120 days, when it was federally backed, housing from the CARES Act, has that been changed, you know? Sorry, I didn't ask you this before. I thought I asked you today and then didn't.
Well, I know early on HUD announced a moratorium on foreclosures and evictions that arise from foreclosures. That was, that's different, though, from what this deals with. Our ordinance and most of the other ordinances throughout California, they deal with, they deal with simple landlord-tenant evictions. And that HUD action has actually since expired, and so that is, the protections that were reported by that HUD action are now over.
And then there was a Senate bill that would have extended payments. I forget the name, that was introduced, and I don't know if it got anywhere. Okay. You don't believe it went anywhere?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that was all. So questions, comments, discussion, we can do it all together. Thanks, Councilmember Middleton.
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Ballinger. Are there anything, or, excuse me, is there anything in our ordinance that is inconsistent with what the state has imposed?
No. The governor's order, the first order that was issued is what this ordinance is modeled after.
Right. And clarification, under our existing ordinance, the reason for the non-payment of rent has to be COVID-related.
Correct.
And what's the obligation of the landlord and what's the obligation of the renter in engaging in discussion, explanation of those reasons?
So our ordinance requires the initial notification to be made by the tenant to the landlord within a certain time period after the rent is due. And it's simple notification, it's not an explanation, it's not backup documents, it's simple notification that they're unable to pay because of COVID-related purposes. If the landlord requests, then the tenant is required to provide verification of that notice. I should point out, our ordinance also requires the tenant to pay what they can. So if a tenant is able to pay even during this emergency period, they're required to pay it under our ordinance.
Okay. And if there becomes a dispute as to whether or not it is COVID-related, how is that dispute resolved?
Our ordinance encourages mediation. We included language in there that would incentivize the parties to mediate. I think the notification and back and forth that the Council provided in our ordinance also encourages that type of mediation and negotiation. But at the end of the day, if that mediation is unsuccessful, then it would have to be resolved by a court.
And as you know from questions that have come up from a couple of constituents of mine, could you elaborate on the situation where there is a tenant landlord dispute that is unrelated to COVID?
If it's a landlord-tenant dispute that's not related to COVID, our ordinance doesn't apply. So if it's an issue of just the lease terminating, you know, the end of the lease period is, has come up, this ordinance does not deal with it.
Right.
You're on mute.
City Attorney Ballinger, if ours expires, then the state takes over? I just want to reiterate what you said at the beginning.
So if ours expires, then what is left in place is essentially the Judicial Council's court rule, which delays the processing of eviction actions and forbids defaults from being entered against a party who has not responded to court. So there are, there are still some protections in terms of delaying it. In addition, even if the Council allows the protections to expire, tenants will still have 180 days within which to come up with rent and pay it back to their landlords.
And if we look at when we first instituted the ordinance, there's been about, and we look at 180 days, if somebody applied at the beginning with their landlord, it's about 10 months that they would have some sort of a rent relief, is that right? From when we started it to today, plus 180 days?
If you count the 180 days as well as the three months that we've been
Right.
in the emergency, yes.
So they'd have basically 10 months to try and get something in order?
Starting from the beginning, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then even if something happens today, they would still have 180 days after going through the process to basically try and come up with the rent?
Or negotiate some other settlement with the landlord, yes.
Thank you. And one more question. On the litigation that has been in San Francisco and Los Angeles, I believe you mentioned, we're in a position where we can't defend a lot of litigation at this point. Does that put us at risk, do you think? Or is that not a correct question for open session here?
I could certainly go into more detail. I guess I would say again, you know, our ordinance is not, does not go as far as Los Angeles's or San Francisco's. So I would hope that organizations like the Department Owners Associations would recognize that and would not, would not use that during this emergency time period.
Thank you.
Just a quick, it looks like the bill passed the Senate and now in the Assembly. And there's a whole in-depth process on how rent would be dealt with, some by the state. People would have an agreement, they wouldn't have to start paying it back, I think, till 2024. But that's not currently the law, so we still have to act. But it'd be good, probably, given it passed the Senate and is moving forward. I'll read it and shoot it out to everyone what the bill is, just so we know, moving forward, but the legislature's looking at it. Obviously, we'd have to pass the Assembly and be signed by the governor, but it looks like a pretty in-depth way of trying to address this, and I think it has some state funding attached to it. We still have to act tonight, given ours is expiring, but I just wanted to share. I had read about it, but I didn't know where it was, so that's where it is at this point.
Just, are we in discussion mode or just in?
Yeah, no, it's all, yeah, questions, discussion, usually all together unless it's a public hearing.
You know, I, you know, since we put the ordinance in place, there's, United Rise has gotten a ton of money to help people with rent, I think it's Waoka has gotten a ton of money to help people with rent. I think that several of the council members in this council have told people about these programs that are available to help people with rent. There's a substantial amount of money available to help people with rent. I would hope that they're looking into those programs versus going into a dispute with a landlord. And I would encourage anyone out there who's having any sort of problems to look into those programs because they are still funded. There's still funding in those programs, from what I understand. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I believe there's a rendered section under COVID-19 on our website, which has all the information, and we'll make sure that it's updated. But I think, I think it is updated with the information and the links to all those programs. There's also a county program at the moment that also provides funding. Obviously, those can only help so many people and so much, but those exist, and people definitely, we want to make sure as many people as possible know about them. We've also sent them out to, through all the business organizations, so the businesses could let their members and their members' employees know about those as well, but the more we can publicize those, the better. So thank you for raising that. Councilmember Garner, I think, is next.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it would also be good to let our residents know about those programs and another media blast, you know, we could put it on both Facebook pages, English and Spanish, I think an update right now would be very useful to people. I think it's important to extend this. You know, we just had shutdown orders again for bars, and we, we don't know if that's going to start to seep into other industries as well and in our city. So I think it's really important to protect our residents, and if things change on a state level, then great, then we don't need to do it anymore. But I think for now, it's important. And I do think that a lot of people are taking advantage of those programs. I know that it's not enough for everybody, but it is definitely a start. So, but I think that one thing that we're going to start seeing now is that there are people who, you know, for the last few months could pay their rent because of personal savings and that are now going to start to need help, who don't have those savings anymore. But I think it is important to protect our residents and just also be, as a city, be very proactive in letting people know where that funding is and how to access it, especially in multiple languages.
There, that's a really good point. And in addition to those funds, and there's County for Renters, the county also opened up their business to Because obviously, landlords who have one, you know, two-year building or something have to pay their mortgages, and so now the county has brought in, who can apply for grants from the county. So we should make sure, City Manager, that we get that out as well. So just an update on these programs, I think is really important right now. Anyone else?
We're way in. We have a motion. Okay, I have another question.
Sure.
I'm just wondering, since there is state law that is protecting people, and there is a lot of litigation going on, what is the necessity of us having one on top, piggybacking on top of that, is what I'm kind of questioning.
Well, I know the state, the state has authorized us to do this. There's a bill moving forward through the legislature that may pass and may get signed, but it's not, doesn't currently offer any protection that way. There are hard-to-get, you know, court dates on these things, but I would think most renters, if they get a three-day notice, are going to think they have to vacate because they can't pay rent. And what this does is it prevents people from issuing those at all. So my inclination is that we continue this for a month, and we see what happens with the state legislation. It moved through the Senate pretty quickly. If it moves through the Assembly, we need to really have it analyzed, so we know what it does, and I'll make sure I send it out to everyone in the City Attorney, the current link to that, but it's Senate Bill 1410, if anyone wants to pick it up. And obviously, if that has a plan that works better and covers everyone, I think that would be ideal. And in fact, once we read it, we might want to take a position on it and reach out to our legislators, ask them to support it. But I would hate to see ours expire and people all of a sudden start getting eviction notices as a result. That would be my concern. And right now, the state doesn't prevent that, does it? Or does it? Let me ask, let me not state something, let me ask the question of our City Attorney.
That is correct. What's now in effect on the state level only prevents the case from going forward once it's in court, but it does nothing to stop the landlord from serving a three-day notice.
And I could add, I raised that before, so most, I was a tenant rights attorney, and I've helped dozens and dozens of families, and they, typically, most people do leave once they get a notice. So that's the important protection, is to prevent the serving of a three-day notice to pay or quit. If you imagine what you might do if you get a three-day notice, it might be to leave and follow the law. And so the state's protection is really not a real protection because it only prevents, again, people in court, which, you know, most people don't make it to before they're evicted legally or illegally. So that's why our moratorium is really important, is to protect, cast a wide net and really protect all renters and not just people who might know their rights and make it to court.
And I think the benefit of also, because we cover commercial, you know, the bars that have to close now, you know, some of them weren't able to pay rent, you know, or plan to pay rent, you know, this month because they were open and now they're closed. And, you know, losing businesses is going to be harmful as well. And ours covers both, which I think is important, a number of them do.
Well, that's a question. Does it apply to tribal land? You know, a lot of the bars, and several of the bars are on tribal land, and does this ordinance apply to tribal land?
My conclusion is that it does. It doesn't contain exemption, and that's my conclusion.
And we've heard no opposition when we passed this from the tribe, as far as I know. Councilman Middleton?
Yeah, I think all of us would like to see these kinds of moratoriums be able to come to an end. And if the state provides the same level of assurance, then that's a reasonable thing to do. But all we're being asked to do here is to extend this ordinance for an additional month at a time when, as we talked about earlier, the economy remains very much unsettled, and I think it's appropriate for us to have another month's extension.
Anything else, or is there a motion? I'd make it otherwise. Okay, Councilman Garner?
It looks like Governor Newsom just acted in relation to evictions. However, I still think that we need to move forward with ours because, as the mayor said, we cover commercial. And us acting for a month, it doesn't really change anything, it seems, from what the governor literally did while we were talking about the budget, so.
Do that right off it.
So I think we should still move, it's my, I would make a motion to move forward for another month, and I'd love the attorney's input on what I'm seeing on the news for next month.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Garner, second by Mayor Proton Holstich.
Councilmember Garner?
I'm sorry, did City Attorney have something?
Just to clarify for the record, what's being done is, an ordinance is being adopted by the council, so it'd be appropriate for the city clerk, after the role is taken, to read the title.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
And the title of this ordinance is "An Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Springs, California: Extending a Temporary Moratorium on Evictions Resulting from Non-Payment of Rent When Such Non-Payment Was Caused by COVID-19 Pandemic and Setting Forth the Facts Constituting Such Urgency." And this is for a one-month extension.
Okay. Let me have...
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm wondering if we could go back to the budget just slightly? I know we've already voted, but is it appropriate to just make a couple comments quickly?
Stay with me, any issue with that? City Attorney?
Okay. So, I wanted to just make a comment that, you know, I know that this council in particular has generally had consensus on everything. We've moved forward with a lot of things, and all of us are in agreement, and I think we work really hard to do that because we want to be making sure that we're considering others and that we're trying to really take into account everybody's viewpoints. But I also want to point out to our residents and maybe even to our council members, if it's useful, that sometimes we're not going to agree completely on what's being presented for varying reasons, and I think that's okay. And in fact, I think that sometimes it's helpful for residents to see because it shows that their opinion and their thoughts on different issues matter, that we are listening. And sometimes, especially in a case like this, when you, you know, the vote's going to happen and it's going to pass, and we feel confident it's going to pass, sometimes you might want to be able to vote a different way to show the community that we've heard you too, or for many other reasons. But again, at the end of the day, I think that we have to appreciate when we can come to consensus and also appreciate when we've decided that we're going to disagree on something, and that's part of the process and that's part of having a democracy. I just wanted to put that out there.
I appreciate that, and I agree with that. I do think we try and all, you know, adjust what we necessarily would want ideally to get to a place that makes sense, and voting differently is totally appropriate. And important that we're respectful and not put on other council members' motivations that may not be accurate as well, if we want to be respectful in those conversations. So the next item is item "For a Continued Discussion and Possible Direction of the Impact in Response to the Local Emergency Related to the Novel Coronavirus Task Report."
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. With regard to this item, I would just like to note that there was an update, but the governor's recommendation and the county did change the order yesterday for today that bars would not be able to continue, they would be temporarily closed because of the COVID. But one of the things that, and well, I'll say, if the City Attorney needs to clarify any of those for council, he will do so. But I also wanted to talk about enforcement, enforcement in terms of how we're addressing this, how we've been, as you know, we've been in a warning mode for the last several weeks because we have a requirement on face coverings out, which is a little bit different than other jurisdictions. So the chief is here, and also head of our code enforcement, Lieutenant Viegas. They're both here, and they can talk about enforcement and address any questions you have, but I just wanted to let you know that the chief's indicated that at this point now, we're going to probably start moving towards actual citations and fines for those that we are finding not in compliance. And as you know, City Council had changed and modified the ordinance that would allow us to ultimately revoke a business license if there was just willful disregard of this rule. So that being said, Mayor and council, I'd like the chief maybe to come forward and just, he also has Lieutenant Viegas with him, just talk about what our experience has been on the enforcement so far. It's been fairly good, actually pretty good. Our merchants are very much cooperative, but Lieutenant can kind of give you an idea of where we are and importantly, what he's seen out in the field, him and his team, and I think he's going to sort of make a recommendation of how you'd like to proceed. Lieutenant, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council, mayor, city staff. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on this subject. As you know, the last three and a half months have been very trying and challenging for everybody in our community, our employees, specifically our code officers. Just to put things in perspective, I did some stats for our enforcement levels. For the last three and a half months, our code officers have handled 2,962 complaints related to the complaints with the emergency orders as it relates to COVID. And we have conducted 962 proactive inspections. Now, these inspections are spot checks of businesses, restaurants, hotels, vacation rentals, and we've been doing a huge educational campaign, the education piece, to get compliance through education. So now here we are, we're now at the end of June, we see another outbreak in the COVID infections, and it's time to go on from the educational piece and start doing enforcement with issuing citations. As I spoke earlier this morning with our downtown merchants meeting, we need to have a united communication piece. It starts with City Hall, it carries over to our business owners and managers, and it's up to us to do the enforcement, but with an understanding that everybody's on the same page, that the ultimate goal is for the safety of everybody, the community, the public and tourists that come to our city. So with that said, I'm here to answer any questions on enforcement from the code officers and obviously moving forward with the expectations of issuing citations to businesses, bars, restaurants, if they're not complying with distancing and face coverings.
Great. And thank you, Lieutenant, and thank you for being at the meeting today. I thought it was really informative, and Mayor Proton Holstich and I have heard on our reopening task force that all the business groups want more enforcement. They all feel our staff has done an amazing job in reaching out and educating, and when we look at 4,000 COVID-related proactive or reactive visits, that's extraordinary. I don't know any city clearly in the county that's doing close to what we're doing and doing it so well. You know, the county had an informational call, which I think all of the council was on, where it was shared that when they were closing bars, but that the sheriff is refusing to enforce any state or county rules when it comes to COVID. So he's choosing which laws are actually being followed in the state of California, and the county council is now going to have to step in to help. So we can't say how much we appreciate having our own police department and code enforcement that is actually following the law. I do think, just a couple things that I want to share with the rest of council, that Mayor Proton Holstich and I heard from the businesses at our meeting, and we heard from the merchants this morning, and want to share, and I know Lieutenant was giving us some thought to some of the things they were requesting, but one is no more warnings or saying, here's a sign, that they want to see people cited. They feel that they're overwhelmingly, all of them are following the rules, and they just feel that the ones who aren't need to be cited and need to be addressed, that they're going to ruin it for everyone, and we're moving backwards. One of the requests, so I just want to share some of the requests because we'd have to really consider them here. They wanted to make sort of the downtown core, maybe Tachiva de Ramon, mask requirement when you're on the sidewalks. For a lot of the restaurants, people are walking by without masking groups, especially after drinking and standing around, and the hosts and hostesses feel uncomfortable, the guests in the restaurants feel uncomfortable, so they wanted that required. They find that a lot of, there are a handful of restaurants where they don't do reservations, and they could have 50 people waiting on Saturday night, congregating in the street without masks. So that was one item, I'll go through them. They wanted us to create the downtown, that you have to wear a mask, a face covering when you're in the downtown zone on sidewalks all the time. They wanted us to either put banners up or put some decal over the no parking Thursdays for Village West, mask required, indoors or outdoors, for the downtown zone. Obviously, this is Main Street, which is uptown downtown. They wanted us to actually take some of the state recommendations and make them requirements. We didn't get through all of them, but obviously, the mask-free zone would only work if there's a way to enforce it, and that's something I think we need some input on, on that. Definitely, one of the ideas I raised, and I've run it by P S Resorts, is fine, is the door of every hotel room, and at the door of the vacation rental, there needs to be a sign with the rules posted, reminding people of what the rules are in Palm Springs. One of the things merchants are hearing is, we don't have to do this where we're from, and they're equally hearing, we came here to get away from having to wear masks. So I won't repeat the language that many of our merchants are hearing, especially the restaurants. So they definitely want to see us up the enforcement in a major way, that this stays a safe place, that they don't want to see things go backwards. Just trying to think of those, there are a couple other ones, but those are the main ones, and so I wanted to share that and we could all weigh in. But I don't know how enforceable that's going to be. I don't know if code enforcement can be on bicycles, running around downtown, how that would work. So Lieutenant, I don't know if you've had more time to think about that since that meeting this morning, but would love to get your input.
Yeah, I had more time to think about it. That would be a pretty big challenge to address the public walking on a public sidewalk. I think we could probably do a better job of messaging downtown and having our business owners emphasize the fact that before any customer comes into their business, they have to ensure that they're wearing masks, wearing masks at the tables. But when you translate that into a public setting on a sidewalk where people are walking, and technically, that's part of the emergency orders, that if people are walking and they're maintaining social distance in a public sidewalk or anywhere in the public, they technically don't have to wear their mask. I see that to be very challenging and very difficult for us to issue citations to public when they're coming to our city. And like you said, you stated earlier, Mayor, where people are making comments, they're coming here to Palm Springs to get away. But I think if we are all on the same page, we, with the city, city staff, business owners, management downtown, the bar owners, that they have to urge the customers and put a stronger emphasis that coming to our city, we are taking all the necessary precautions to ensure that everybody is complying with wearing their facial coverings and maintaining social distancing if they're not together from the same household or friends. But it's going to be extremely difficult, but I think it starts with messaging downtown. We could probably put that a lot, put more signage downtown and put it on our social media platforms. I think that was discussed in the meeting by one of the business owners, saying we can put that message out from the city as well. maintaining social distancing if they're not together from the same household or friends. But it's going to be extremely difficult, but I think it starts with messaging downtown. We could probably put that a lot, put more signage downtown and put it on our social media platforms. I think that was, that was discussed in the meeting by one of the business owners saying we can put that message out from, from the city as well. I think that if we do do enforcement, where we do issue citations to patrons just walking or just the public in general, we're getting into some, some emotional times if people are here and I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that would probably be reasonable in the direction we should go. If anything, we could do, we could have more officers downtown constantly reminding the public to wear the facial coverings when it's, when they're coming in within the social distance of other people and just to remain mindful of that. But I think we have a stronger level of enforcement when we get to, when they enter businesses or bars and restaurants.
And then the other, on that note, and then Councilor Middleton, people felt on weekends downtown, it was so clustered, there was no social distance, but how about people who are congregating outside waiting at restaurants where, you know, for supermarkets or big box stores, there were markings to keep people distant and there could be 25, I saw pictures of 25, 30 people, you know, 9:30 at night, standing outside a restaurant without face coverings. Is there a way to deal with it there? Do we work with the restaurants? Do you have any advice on that?
Yes, so when it comes to something like that, we could definitely help mitigate social distancing and reminding them of wearing their facial coverings. But there again, I think the, the more important part of it is the, the educational piece as opposed to stopping them and issuing them a citation because they're not complying with the mandatory facial coverings or social distancing. In those situations, I think it would be more important for us to respond and assist maybe management on how we can accomplish a waiting area or so, you know, to make, to ensure that they're maintaining their distance before they go into a business. That's going to be difficult as well, but I think that's more manageable than for us going out there and start issuing citations to, to the patrons waiting to go inside, inside of a business.
Thank you. Councilor Middleton.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Lieutenant. I, I can truly appreciate how difficult a challenge it would be, but question, and this may be for the city attorney, currently, what are the rules when it comes to wearing a face covering while walking down a street such as Palm Canyon?
So the current rule is both under the city order as well as the governor's order that you don't need to wear a face covering when you're outdoors doing something like walking if you can maintain social distancing. What I think the issue here is, is downtown, especially on the weekends or other, you know, busy time periods at night, when people are out dining, people aren't able to maintain social distancing, even, even if for brief moments of time. And so what I think is being suggested is in those more crowded areas, even though it's outdoors, do we want to require face covering in, in those situations?
So is there an exception to the social distancing rule for members of the same household?
Yes, social distancing is defined as, as maintaining six feet of separation except for members of the same household. And the idea there is you're already in the same house with them and so.
Okay. So do we as a city council have the authority to require a face covering, including individuals of the same household and to require a face covering in any situation where social distancing is not possible?
You certainly do with regard to the latter, where social distancing is not possible. And again, we sort of have that in the state and city order. Legally, could we, could we require a face covering for members of the same household? We could. It becomes a bit tenuous. Are you proposing like at home or in the car or are you talking about in public settings?
In public settings on public sidewalks. I'm not talking about in your home or in your car, but when you're out with a member of your same household, that you are in a public setting where you're interacting with other individuals who are not a member of yours, of your household.
In, in that situation, our order as well as the governor's order requires them to wear face coverings. We already use that.
All right. Yeah, I think, and I'm going to make a comment now, I think there are some challenges when it comes to enforcement of this and issuing citations, but I believe in the downtown area in particular, that face coverings should be mandatory for absolutely everyone who cannot provide a valid medical certificate indicating that they are not, that it's not healthy for them to have a face covering. The number of individuals in our community that are because of age or immune deficiency at extremely heightened risk to COVID and the extent to which it's out of control is, is something we, we simply have to address. And I don't want to have to close businesses back down. It is irresponsible. It is irresponsible for a person to walk down our public street without a face covering. You are showing your disrespect for your fellow human beings when you do that. And I think it's time we address it.
Thank you, Councilor Middleton. The other, maybe we try and insert pieces to this, stay on this one, see what the comments and thoughts are. It is something our merchants downtown definitely want. Yeah, Councilor Garner, but I see the enforcement.
Sure. You know, I think it's, it is really important for us to be considering our residents and also the people who work in, in the restaurants and, and work at the stores downtown. I think that's a really big part of it. I know one of our, our residents, Juan Espinoza, sent us some really great research that he did showing that the Latino community is adversely affected from COVID in, in the Coachella Valley and how queer that those numbers are. And a lot of our Latino residents are workers and in our, in our stores, in our restaurants. And I think it's, it's just, it's critical that we're making sure that we're protecting them and, and anybody that, that's here. So I, I agree that we need to make sure that we make the health of our community priority.
You. Anyone else?
I would echo what has already been said, but I, I think that what we may want to do is in the notice that we have to give to people who have a vacation rental, who come in and vacation rent, rent a vacation rental in the city, they get, they're supposed to get facial coverings are required, but there's a section of that that says it's not required when you're outdoors. And maybe we just want to remove that section from it so that people just think they have to have a facial covering without misleading them. It's just, we're outright telling them, you don't need it when you're out in public. And we might want to remove that section from the flyers that we hand out. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I, sorry, I do think this is, you know, an educational opportunity as well, right? To make sure people are doing this the right way, that they're wearing masks properly. Sometimes you see people who are really not. So I think there's, there's a lot that, that goes into this. And also because it's hot outside, so, and we've talked about that before. I know that I said it before, that I had concerns of wearing masks outside when it was hot. And so we are kind of walking that back, which is fine. I think it's totally legitimate to say, hey, things have changed. But I do think that has to be clear and, and as Councilmember Middleton said, it's, it's in an area of town, right? It's in an area that is often full of people. We're not, we're not saying that when you're walking down the street in your neighborhood completely by yourself that you need to be wearing a mask.
Mayor Proton Holstich.
Thank you. I agree. I think that, and I just want to say and reiterate, I continue to be extremely frustrated by the County of Riverside to not enforce some of these policies. And as we're cutting our budget and we're talking about efficient use of police resources and code enforcement, I mean, we have a lot to do as a city and we've not getting a lot of funding, like the mayor talked about, to do all of this extra work on enforcement. And we've really stepped up to the plate, our police and our code enforcement have stepped up to the plate, our merchants and the workers who are having to enforce it. So I know that our supervisor had a call earlier, earlier this week, which was yesterday to, and we asked, and I asked, I saw that the city, the County of San Bernardino's Public Health Department or Environmental Health is certifying businesses with a seal that they can put on the door to show that they're in compliance. And the county is pursuing that. So we really need the county to step up on enforcement and to help us because I think there's significant resources there. They've gotten a lot of COVID relief that we haven't gotten. So I just want to say, I hope the county will continue to work with us on enforcement because this is taking a lot of over enforcement and resources from our police department. I just want to make, I'm in support of all of this. I just want to make sure we're following the Americans with Disabilities Act. So maybe the city attorney could clarify for folks who have a disability, what their requirement is to show proof of paperwork of that because typically we protect against that. I saw that there are false or fake documents from the mask, anti-mask club going around. But could you just explain for, for folks, for merchants, for workers, you know, for people with disabilities, what are their rights for the city attorney?
Yes, so under both the city's order as well as the state's order, people who have respiratory or other physical conditions that prevent them from being able to safely wear a face covering are not required to, to wear a face covering. Our order does not require them to maintain or, you know, show any sort of doctor's note or anything. And generally, under the ADA, that is not required. And so we need to kind of tread carefully on, on that type of requirement.
Thank you.
So Mayor Proton, I think we both saw something where, I don't know if it was another city, where there are accommodations, people can wear the shields, which may not be as protective as other people, but don't block breathing. I don't know if that's something we could say needs to be done if you can't wear a mask, but you need to wear something to accommodate it. So I don't know if you know that right now or city attorney, or if we can look into it and give directions to the city manager to come up with something, because we don't want to see a whole bunch of people just making the claim. And, and we, we are seeing evidence of that, at least, you know, in other places for certain.
Yes, that's the type of, you know, reasonable accommodation I think the ADA would, would, would permit.
Okay. So that may be a good way forward. And then just on this subject, which I think we're in general consensus and we understand it'll be hard to enforce, but we can educate and, you know, if code enforcement or police see it, they can let people know actually they need to wear masks. I, I appreciate the challenge of trying to cite someone who, especially at midnight, but it is definitely a tool in the arsenal. But I'm thinking it might be cleaner if we say this applies when, when, when on any sidewalk where there's businesses, right? Because there are areas in Smoke Tree where you can see 10 people, you know, gathering and waiting outside a supermarket. I mean, it's not just downtown. I think we see it more there because more people congregate there. It might be cleaner to have a rule, you know, if we say the uptown, downtown corridor, people will not know what that means if they're visitors, that you have to wear masks inside any business, face coverings inside any business or outside on any sidewalk where or street with other businesses. So where, you know, you're jogging, riding a bike, walking in your, a neighborhood is not required, but I think, I'm just trying to come up with something that may be easier to use and try and make it clear to people what, what a rule is instead of picking in between these streets. When somebody's here for the first time, won't know what we're talking about. So I don't know, people are just brainstorming out loud.
I like that.
Is that generally good with folks? Okay. Are people good with the idea of then posting this on every hotel door? I reached, I've talked to the head of P S Resort, said no objection to that. And at the exit door or right next to the door where you have to see it at every vacation rental, with what this rule is not, you don't have to wear it outside? Is it, are people good with that?
We also need to update the webpage, I think.
Yeah, and do social media on that. One idea was to do banners on Palm Canyon. So city manager, can you just take a look into that and cost and see if that's doable? Or some decal on the Thursday no parking signs, it might be colorful. People will say, just ways to get the word out more, I guess, I think was the main thing. And then, oh, Mayor Proton Holstich, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, finish yours and then I'll have something at the end.
Okay, so I think all those, you know, the more we can do that, I think the city really needs to put out how much our code compliance is doing. I don't think the public realizes this work. I think we should do, you know, update every Monday about the last week and push it out so people know how responsive you're being. And I think it's a sense of council, but disagree that we need to actually start citing. If a business isn't putting up a sign, they've all been mailed the information, we've done two months of education. If the tables start creeping back close together, it's not another warning to move them that they've already had. I think we just need to start the citations because most businesses, as we've heard, and most are doing great, but it's the same ones who we're going back to and we, no, you got them too close, it's the weekend, kind of thing, that we need to start citing. And that was the message from the business community that we've heard at this point. But I think we need to let code enforcement and police know what we, we as a council want on that.
I support moving forward to fine businesses that are in violation. I'm not sure if we, and just under the discretion of the best, you know, the best discretion of code enforcement and the police department. I went to one of my favorite business, I've been to a number of my favorite businesses and they didn't have the signs yet up, you know, it's not willful or intentional violations. So I would hate to see someone getting a fine when they haven't gotten the fine, the sign. I'm trying to bring the signs with me. I know the mayor's doing this too, to hand them out to businesses as we go places. You know, we, we just, we're trying to do a lot of education, but I do agree moving forward to have more of an emphasis on finding businesses that are in kind of constant non-compliance.
And then I have one question from the city attorney on, so when we were on the call with Riverside County Public Health, but we all heard, we've been asking since they started testing about how the public health thinks the person acquired, where they think it's most likely they got the virus, so we could focus our education and enforcement and policy appropriately. And they have now started, I think in the last week to 10 days, asking people when they register to get tested, if they work in a central business and what it kind, do they, have they been to a large indoor event, have they been to a large outdoor event? And what they're told us was they're seeing definitely clustered among essential workers in big box stores, restaurants, bars, obvious people who work in agriculture and food packaging especially. But the number one thing they're currently seeing is people at parties and houses and whether that's a resident, a part-time resident, a vacation rental, that people are gathering, they're not wearing face coverings, they're inside more because of air conditioning, which is more risky than outside, that that's the number one thing they're seeing. And we'll get more data as this goes on. And my understanding is those aren't allowed if they're not members of your household. So I just want to be clear because vacation rentals usually have, they can have six or eight people and not, you know, only, they can be four couples that are not all in the same household. So what is allowed and what isn't? There's a lot of confusion, I think, on that.
So you're correct. Under the state's stay-at-home order, those types of gatherings are not permitted. And I think what we're hearing from the governor, he, he made some statements in today's press release and he's going to, I think, be elaborating on that tomorrow in anticipation of this weekend's Fourth of July holiday, that he is very serious that those types of gatherings are not allowed. And so, you know, that, that, he's identified that as being one of the key problem areas when people get together from members of not their same household.
So for vacation rental- So for vacation rentals, what is the state and county rule, I guess state rule, um, is the one we have? Can members of, who are not in the same household rent a vacation rental together or is it only members of the same household? Because I don't think that's clear to the public, me, or the vacation rental.
I believe, I believe that they have to be members of the same household. I believe that requirement is still in the, in the guidelines. I can, I can confirm that here.
Yeah, I think we should check that and make sure we let people know what the rules are. Um, and let our enforcement know what those rules are because I don't think people are aware, I think, or there's definitely confusion on that. Um, and then on vacation rentals, when we're enforcing and there is a party outside, even if there's no music, they definitely, I know, can't have people who aren't listed on the contract. So when we do that, are we citing or is that a strike? How are we handling that as a city currently?
Hi, Mayor, and councilors again. Um, I, I wanted to bring up some of the stats just during this COVID specifically uh for co, for vacation rental. So we've had a total of 669 complaints on the vacation rental hotline. And out of, out of those complaints, 226 citations have been issued for various violations. It could be for music or during the time when uh none of the guests had to be owner-occupied, those were citations as well. So we definitely have been addressing not just the, the COVID issues with the businesses, restaurants and hotels and bars, but also the vacation rental is a whole nother issue of its own that we are being called upon constantly to address those concerns as well. Um, other stats that I wanted to bring up is the code hotline itself. We had over a thousand complaints on that. The city app on Rattle Tech, we had over a thousand complaints there as well. And our proactive inspections, 962. And I'd be remiss if, if I, not to make you aware of the hard work that our code officers are doing day in and day out for the last three and a half months, they're, they've been doing an outstanding job trying to keep up with the workflow as well as doing proactive spot checks and ensuring that people are complying. And I, and I think collectively with the message from the city to the, to the business and community and our enforcement efforts, that's why we are getting a good, a good amount of compliance um where we're at now. And I definitely agree that moving forward with issuing citations is only going to give us more compliance um all around. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Great. Um, thank you for, I think we all appreciate that. So the city manager, are those citations ending up being strikes like under our ordinance? And how is that being managed?
I didn't understand, are they ended up being what, Mayor?
Well, when we're citing, it's usually at one of, you get three strikes in a year or you have your vacation rental license suspended. Is that happening? Are strikes happening? How's that? I haven't seen any updates on that at all, so.
Right, so we'd get a, we can get a, a report from, from the office of special projects. I'll ask Veronica to, to get that. I, I, I don't know just off the top of my head the specifics on who gets that, but we can get that information.
Okay. In answer to your earlier question about members of the same household, the initial guidance from the county when, when hotels and vacation rentals were uh allowed to be reopened was that they had to be members of the same household. However, that requirement was later removed. So now members of different households can rent uh a vacation rental.
Okay. The state allows that as well?
Yes, under the state, under the state.
Currently, currently anyway. Okay, no, that's good to know because people are asking that, so. Um, but they can't have people, so how does that sit in with not being able to have six friends over to your backyard if you're not a vacation rental and you're a resident?
It doesn't.
So we can do that now.
It's just.
It's just inconsistent.
Yep.
So if I rent my neighbor's house, I can have friends over, but I can't have them in my house. I'm not, I'm not, it's not our law, but the illogic ridiculousness of that one is um pretty incredible. Uh, thank you for um for at least letting us know that. Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you. I didn't raise my hand, but you knew I wanted to speak. Um, thank you. So I just want to flag, I'm concerned about where we're over enforcing. You know, if we want to be concerned about hotel rooms or vacation rentals, I think we should, you know, talk about that, you know, if it, they should be open or they should be closed, um, if it, if, if this gets a lot worse. Um, obviously, we decided, you know, to defer to the state and the state and the county open them. Um, but however, as someone who um had a vacation rental and had a lot of over enforcement, um, and I know that code, code compliance, because I've talked about the numbers with the chief, um, are getting a ton of calls, it's a ton of work, our residents are unsure what the rules are. And so then what's happening is if you have anyone in your backyard, you're getting a call, possibly a complaint, and then our code enforcement is having to go out and check and, you know, our, our lieutenant and our, our chief can talk more about what that actually looks like on the ground. But I do think it gets into really murky waters where, you know, I've had code enforcement ask me to prove that I'm the owner of my house or has come while my husband's watching the council meeting quietly, um, because they got a complaint and it just, it gets, we don't want to get to the point where policing who's in whose homes and um it gets to a privacy thing. So I think we should enforce, I think we should enforce the restrictions, but I just want to be really clear how we're using police and code enforcement resources um and making sure that it's clear rules that people can follow and don't create like a ton of calls for code enforcement and then they're forced to go out and respond to multiple times and it's hard for them to do their jobs and kind of creating a hostile environment with tourists responding or, or residents like me responding. I just, we, we, I think the rule needs to be really clear and we should be really conscientious about how we're utilizing police and code enforcement resources in a time where we're already asking them to do a lot.
Oh, yeah, I think it's a good point and I think clarifying the rules is important. Um, you know, typically if there was complaint on noise and there was no noise heard, we weren't bothering the resident or the vacation renter, so it sounds like a third of the calls are resulting in complaints. So it'd be good to get a report on what those complaints, what the violations are and what they're seeing uh for council, um, so we can understand that better. I agree with you. We, you know, we have limited resources and they're being stretched, especially because of COVID and because we are one of the few cities really stepping up to do this kind of enforcement and our residents, as we know, um, are engaged. And because our residents, you know, we have so many high vulnerable residents, we don't want to be in a situation where residents don't feel safe going out, um, but we don't want to enforce to the point where everyone feels we're in lockdown again when we're not. And so it's a fine line, I agree, and I think that getting that information would be helpful. Councilmember Garner.
I, I do want to go back again to, to just talking about how we're doing outreach on this stuff because I think that um for a lot of us, it may seem like our social media and everything is flooded with this information, but there's also a whole segment of people that it's not getting to or that have people who are um giving them conflicting messages on whether or not it's actually safe to be wearing a mask and all of these things and, and whether gatherings are safe or not safe. There's a lot of, of conflicting messages out there, even though I think probably all of us are seeing these messages in a positive way. So I just would really like to continue to, to, as we're doing this, we are enforcing it and I think that's important to go this route, but I also just want to make sure that we're doing as much education in different ways as we can. Um, because I think that as far as the gatherings, it's not, that's part of the thing that's kind of falling through the cracks in terms of education is why it's not, it's not okay to be gathering.
I think that's important, given, and just to respond on that quickly, Mayor Protem Holstich, um, sort of an offshoot of the reopening, task forces working with some, with communications director and some others on really how we ramp up our messaging, our social media messaging on the data as well as the rules. So um, I presume by our next council meeting, we'll have some interesting uh new things that are going to be happening, but there is an effort on that. I just wanted to share with the rest of the council and thank you, Mayor Protem Holstich, for taking that on. I know you know the most about social media, so I'm glad you did that. Now, algorithms work and a lot of people don't see things we post. Um, that's all stuff that uh is way above my head, uh, so thank you for stepping up on that. Um, Councilmember Middleton.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I agree with uh Councilmember Garner. We need to be reaching out uh in a vast variety of different ways. Uh, but we can't lose sight of, I think, a couple of things though. Uh, one is the seriousness of the threat that is before us. Uh, and two, and this is really unfortunate, uh, the extent to which uh we have individuals uh in the media and in uh, uh, and some in uh leadership positions that are deliberately uh misleading uh the public regarding the extent of the crisis uh that is before us. Uh, and uh, it, it is incumbent on us to get out accurate information regarding uh the extent of this crisis and uh, hopefully uh, uh, some of those who I think have been very deliberate in their uh misinformation uh are realizing the error uh of their ways. But uh, uh, there are people who are on our streets who uh somehow or another believe that they're making a political statement by uh putting uh the people around them at risk. Uh, and uh, we've got to address that.
Thank you. Um, a couple of questions I got from the city attorney. So one is bars who have temporary catering licenses can operate, but they have to follow all restaurant rules, all the tables have to be at least six feet apart. Um, correct. Or one another, or the people at the tables need to be able to sit six feet apart. Um, the alcohol has to be ordered with the food in one transaction, so they can't order a pizza from down the block and stay for four hours and keep ordering drinks.
Right.
Is that accurate? Um, I think it's really important we do that education. I don't think we have that many of those. Um, we had four or five bars closed down voluntarily because employees and restaurants, because employees tested, or customers in some cases tested positive. Um, but I think we've been asked that. Bar areas in restaurants, as long as they're six foot distancing of the groups, they're allowed to continue?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then gyms, the state strongly recommends face coverings even when you're working out. Most gyms are doing it in Palm Springs, some um are not doing it if you're on cardio equipment. Our current rule says you can't, you have to wear a face covering inside any business. And so there's been confusion with code enforcement about what are, what the rule is, um, given we're stricter than the state, but we didn't discuss gyms in particular. So do you have any guidance or do we need to give you some guidance?
I think guidance would be helpful. The city's order says that face coverings are required when entering a, entering any business that is allowed to be open. And that was put in place obviously before fitness centers were allowed to be reopened. Um, after, after the city issued that uh or updated its order, the state allowed fitness centers to be reopened and as part of their guidance, they said that face coverings are encouraged to be worn while working out, uh, but not actually required. And so we've received a fair number of questions from, from operators as well as patrons of, of gyms and other fitness centers in terms of whether it's, it's required.
And how does the state order requiring face coverings that came out after that fit with that?
Um, that's a good question. Um, let me pull that up here, hold on.
Okay, thanks. While you are, I'll note the gyms say they want to follow the rules, they're just not sure if they are, at least from code enforcement's proactive visits.
I think when we're, we're looking at this too, um, we're still not obviously back to any kind of uh pre-COVID behavior inside of our businesses. And I think it's, even with gyms, it's really nice for many people that they can go in, but there's still going to be restrictions and um, I, I mean, I think with cardio machines as well, there's, there's going to be limitations. Maybe you don't go as long because you need to wear a mask and it gets trying, or maybe you move your, you know, your running to early in the morning. I think that we all have to just be reasonable in how we're moving forward with this and just because the gym is open doesn't mean they're going to be able to participate in the same way they did before this started.
Thank you. The same, it's about exercise classes, when people feel they don't want to wear their face covering. Um, but my understanding of our rules is you do, that we put our, I don't know what the states are and whether we want to change ours. So allow people not to wear face coverings. You're muted.
The, the, thank you. The governor's uh more recent uh guidance for face coverings from June 18th, again, which is after the fitness centers guidelines, states that uh people need to wear face coverings inside of or allowing to enter any indoor public space. Um, it has a footnote then that says unless exempted by state guidelines for specific public settings. And so the more specific public setting or more specific guidelines would be for fitness centers. So that's how they interact is the more specific state guidelines for fitness centers would apply. And again, there it's only a recommendation.
Okay. So ours is a requirement currently inside a fitness center. But we need to be clear if we meant that for fitness centers now that they're open.
Correct, because again, our order was last amended before fitness centers were allowed to be open.
I was hoping the state would have done that. Um, so what do people think? Uh, at the very least, I think they'd need to have out of order or remove machines that are, you know, eight feet apart, which wouldn't leave very many in some gyms, but I just think, you know, you're, you're sweating, you're breathing heavily, it definitely, there are other people in the gyms that don't feel safe as a result of people in them, so that's, that's the challenge. Councilmember Garner, you?
I, I kind of, I stand by what I was saying before in that this is a different reality and people need to adjust. And so I would, um, I, I know it's hard personally, I haven't gone back to a gym yet. I want to, but I'm, I'm not comfortable. Um, but I, I think that it's, it's in the best interest of everyone to wear a mask the whole time that you're there because it's an enclosed space. And that's my concern. It's, it's, it's an enclosed space and like you said, it's not just people talking, it's people exercising, there's more bodily fluids. So um, I mean, gyms are already a place where people are more likely to catch something from touching machines that are not clean, so it seems reasonable to require it. Um, at the very minimum, I think strongly, strongly encourage.
You know, I think from hearing from residents, I lean to requiring it because, you know, they feel people especially who aren't from in town come to the gym, they don't feel safe being in the gym anymore. We have seniors who, you know, can't run on, you know, the streets, um, who want to walk on a treadmill and uh, so I worry about our residents. I know some gyms are doing it, it seems to be working. Um, I haven't gone back either. Um, I'd rather be outside very early uh or very late. Councilmember Lewis?
No, I think that some gyms are doing it. Yeah, I went to the gym for one day and that was, I, I didn't feel comfortable going back, but World Gym where I go was doing a great job. Everyone had to wear a mask, they were wiping down the equipment constantly. Um, I don't think every gym is doing that, but a gym could also shut off every other piece of equipment if they can't physically separate them. Um, I, I think it is important to have these protocols in place and, and a gym is known to be kind of a breeding ground of germs. Um, so I, I'm inclined to have them required in gyms. I, I don't think it's asking much to have your face mask required in a gym.
I agree.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton?
I agree.
Okay, so we'll follow our rules on face coverings in gyms like every other business. And the last thing, which isn't a rule, but I just want to share for the public because I heard it this morning from a restaurant at a I heard it this morning from a restaurant at a meeting and from others. You know, when we, when you go to a restaurant, they're all wearing face coverings to protect you. But when they're serving your food or pouring your water or picking up dishes, you're not wearing a face covering at your table. And there are restaurants who are asking, when you see someone on, an employee come up, to bring you something, to just, you know, wear, wear a bandana or scarf and just put it over your face and nose to protect them, because they could see 100 people in a shift. And those are the people who are getting sick. So no one expects anyone to wear them when you're eating or drinking, that doesn't work. But to just try and really be thoughtful about, the people are putting themselves at risk so they can serve you food and drinks. And take that extra step, because it's making a lot of the business owners and the employees very nervous. And there are people who aren't going back to those jobs because they don't feel safe. So whatever you can do to be considerate of them, please do.
So can we move beyond asking people to do that and make it a requirement?
Yeah, hard one to enforce. I know one restaurant is actually having people sign when they come in, that they understand that if they get up to use a restroom, leave, do anything, they have to have their face covering on, or they will not be allowed to sit down again. So they don't end up with the people who aren't going to do it. I don't, how, how would we frame that as a rule? I'm open to it by all means. Councilmember Garner?
Yeah, I, I think it should be a rule. I think it's, I, I understand that, yes, enforcement is, is not super easy on that. But I think that it, it allows the restaurants who are struggling, right, who they're feeling uncomfortable. But if they can say, this is a requirement by the city, it makes things a little bit easier for them to kind of enforce within. So I, I think that's reasonable.
That makes sense to me. City Attorney, can we draft something that when, you know, an employee is coming to you in a, in a restaurant or bar where you're sitting at the table, to please, that you're, you need to put on your face covering until they leave?
We can. As you've identified, enforcement will be the issue because it's a fairly transient activity, but, but absolutely.
Yeah, I think it'll help the restaurants that want it, as Councilmember Garner pointed out, to be able to let people know when they're coming in, that they're, they're going to enforce that if they want to.
So, so Mayor, could we be?
Did we reach consensus earlier that when someone is on a public street or public sidewalk in front of a business, that face coverings are required?
I think so.
Right.
Everyone? Anyone disagree? Yes, we did. It looks slightly.
So could I just clarify, Mayor, just to clarify, so in restaurants, you wear your face covering when you go in, you, you don't have to wear it when you're seated, but if a waiter comes, you have to put your face covering back on when a waiter of any sort is at your table?
Yeah. An employee, right?
Employee.
Whether it's someone busing or food runner, whatever. Yeah.
Okay. And then also, face coverings are required everywhere outside downtown or citywide?
Yeah, in, in front of a business.
In front of a business, well, so, and, and that would be anywhere? Or are you just talking about congregating in front of businesses or people walking on the street? Just wanted to make sure we have clear direction. Because there's sort of an enormous thing.
But not on residential streets. Right? The message is, when you're going to a business or walking on commercial, in commercial areas, you need to have a face covering on.
Commercial is defined just in the downtown, uptown, but it could be any, any business district in the city. Commercial. Got it. Okay.
I would just say, your business. So understandable for people.
Okay. So it might be, if I could ask City Attorney, if we could help memorialize that in, in an order? So I think that's going to be helpful for code enforcement as they, they, they go about to try to start this process. Thank you.
Right. And then, so the City Attorney, you know, if there seems to be a need to move next steps, the state strongly recommends something, we've typically done it. Do we need to call a special meeting? Does the city manager have authority to do it and then bring it to a meeting? You know, we had that with the bars, right? How to handle it if we want to act first? Should we bring it to two council members? What's, what's the best process?
Well, so technically, the city manager has that authority under our emergency ordinance. I think the past few months, the city manager, or city manager has been seeking direction from the, from the full city council in terms of where the council is at on, on these different emergency orders.
Okay. Councilmember Middleton?
Yeah, just a question for the City Attorney, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this earlier. But someone is at a bar restaurant where food and drinks are being served. Is there any limit on the amount of time that they can stay there consuming alcohol after they have finished their meal? It's not a time limit, per se. It is a requirement that they only order alcohol in the same transaction as a meal. So they would have to continue ordering more food if they want to continue ordering more alcohol. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Are we done on this one? Anyone else? Okay. Next item.
Hey, sorry, I was waiting towards the end. I just wanted to echo the education piece that Councilmember Garner raised. And what, someone emailed us saying, you know, are there other, I know we've done a lot of proactive work, but if we are concerned about tourists, people staying in hotels or vacation rentals, you know, I know we've worked really hard to make sure that businesses have access to masks for their workers. But I know that there's a lot of volunteer organizations, or there might be buying power to provide masks to tourists. Because again, I don't think, you know, fining people will solve the problem, but if there are proactive ways that we can get a mask to everyone, or have a mask, you know, have some businesses be mask stations where they can hand out masks, or some ideas like that. So maybe the mayor can take that up on his task force for businesses and we can find out, you know, what is the problem we're trying to solve, that people just don't have them, don't have them on the person while they're traveling, you know, or really only enforce against the people who are intentionally non-compliant.
It's our task force, and I think it's a good thing to bring up. But one of the things we've heard is, the county has a lot of masks they'll provide for free. And I don't know if we've reached out, so our code enforcement has it, right? And we do find, I like the idea of see if there's some businesses that will distribute them. So why don't we check in with the city manager tomorrow, and see if we, or with the county, and see if we can get a big quantity of masks that we can help distribute and have hotels and vacation rentals have as well. It's a great idea.
Great. We could get Pump Springs branded masks.
So I'll have to say that the, the Rowan Hotel is already doing that. At both of their doors, they have a box of masks and they have hand sanitizer at the Rowan already. And a few of the shops in downtown Palm Canyon actually are selling masks right at the door. So I think there is an impetus to keep that going, make it, keep it going.
That's great.
That is great. Oh, and I'm looking at my list, there's one other thing for the City Attorney, just to clarify, that entertainers, people calling bingo, singers, bands, not allowed in restaurants or anywhere right now.
Correct.
Okay. I think there was a lot of confusion on that. I got some questions today on it. And just make sure code enforcement knows that, because I think there was some confusion between county and state, but now that's clear that that's not allowed at all. So, okay. Next item.
Mayor, if I could, there's still some additional things there I'd like to discuss. So, so is it related to COVID? It just is a reminder and recall that the whole $50 million we took out of our budget was because of the COVID. So there's about 80 employees that are less in our, our organization to address all these. And today was the last day for probably about 30-some that were actually laid off. So I just want to, again, ask for, you know, everyone's patience, because whether you're at the count, whether you're trying to get services, whether it's through, through planning or you're seeing changes in parks maintenance, street maintenance, across the board, there's, there's less employees. So it, it may take us longer to do that. And again, that's part and parcel of the COVID. And, and I would just be remiss if I didn't say, the enormity of the enforcement on, on the face masks, that, at least, but my recommendation is, you know, we're, we're, we're thin in code enforcement as it is. We may need to seriously think about some additional code enforcement if we're going to be able to, in a meaningful way, enforce this. Or there'll be a lot of calls, obviously, we're not going to be able to address immediately. So I'd just like to give, have you give some thought to that, because I think that's an important part of this equation. That, that was one. Number two, number two, counsel is?
I don't know if you wanted to say anything other than we understand.
Yeah, thank you. Just sort of a commentary and a, and a reminder for, for people to maybe have some patience. But we're going to do our best. On second of all, counsel, some guidance with regard to opening of facilities. We were planning this week to open, obviously, the swim center, skate park, and have some other activities in the library. Given where we are going with the, the COVID, we decided to, to kind of just step back for a moment. And any direction you have would be appreciated. I mean, otherwise, it appears maybe we should take at least a month of break before we reconsider that, but a direction from counsel would be appreciated.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think there are two areas I think we want to figure out. One is computer access. Even if we're not opening something for other reasons, I think there are people who need to apply for benefits, look for employment, that don't have access. So I don't know how we best do that. I know we brought that up before. And the only other one is, you know, the swim center, if it was outdoors with distancing and appointments and bathrooms are available, people didn't use locker rooms to change in stores, you know, I don't, I don't know what the plan would be, but given the cases are going up, that, that's outside, so that was one I would be open to. But I don't know that we need to rush it. I think when you feel it's safe, maybe. What do other folks think on that?
I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't rush it. And speaking to an M.D., swim centers actually were a place for COVID transmission. And, you know, I don't know exactly why, but they were telling me their hospitals were filling up and they thought it was from swimming. So I, I just don't know about rushing it if we really are trying to protect our citizens.
I, I think with the increase right now, it's better to be a little bit more cautious as we move forward. It's disappointing, but I think it's better to just have a really good plan in place, just in the same way that we were going through it before with the other sports.
All right. Then Mayor, I think best thing to do is, you know, we'll be having this item for updates on each successive agenda, and we can sort of reevaluate it every two weeks while we have our meetings and get some further direction. Thank you.
Now we'll go to 5X on one new item. Global LLC requesting administrative minor modification for a leave from the minimum separation distance requirement for cannabis dispensary lounge at 562 South Indian Canyon Drive, case 7B1601AMM. We had public comment on this last time, but staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you is a request for a distance waiver from separation requirements between cannabis dispensary facilities. In terms of the application before you, the applicant is proposing a facility that will include both a dispensary and a lounge. The dispensary will be just under 300 square feet. The lounge will be about 400 square feet and will only have three seats. The number of seats in the lounge would be limited due to the limited number of parking spaces available on site. The applicant is not proposing any changes, any significant changes to the exterior of the building, and I'll go into that in just a moment. In terms of the facility, the applicant has provided renderings of the interior of the building. On the exterior, they are doing minor patching and repairing of the stucco on the exterior of the building, repainting and refinishing the window trim and things like that. But again, no major significant changes to the building itself. In terms of the code requirements, the updated cannabis regulations, which were adopted by city council in December of 2019, require 500 feet of separation between dispensaries, and that's measured from property line to property line. The proposed facility is 60 feet away from the next nearest dispensary. There is a single property that separates them. They are both on the east side of Indian Canyon, and so they're both on the same side of the block. Other than the distance separation requirement, the proposed application complies with all other zoning requirements. Just looking at other facilities, other cannabis facilities within the area, these are the only two dispensaries within 500 feet of each other that's shown in the blue circle on the map. There are other cannabis facilities further to the north on Palm Canyon Drive. And then in the Sunny Dunes area, there is one open facility and several proposed facilities. But again, it's just the two in question that are within 500 feet of each other, the Rockstar Cannabis, which is established, and then the application that you have before you. In terms of the criteria for distance waiver, there are four major issues that need to be addressed, or four findings that need to be made. First is relative to consistency with zoning and the general plan. The proposed application is consistent. However, we also need to address the impact to neighboring properties, impacts to general health and welfare, and whether there are any unique conditions of the site that would justify the distance waiver. Unfortunately, staff is not able to make the latter three findings relative to the distance waiver. One of the things I will mention that council may consider is the fact that this particular commercial space on the first floor of the building has remained empty for some period of time. We don't have a business license history on it. And so again, that indicates to us that the space has been vacant and has not been leased for commercial purposes. That concludes my report to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. We also have the applicant available by phone if you have any questions of the applicant. You will note that in your backup materials, you do have a number of letters relative to this proposed request, in addition to additional information from the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, Flynn, is there any questions? Councilmember Garner?
Um, Flynn, can you just remind us, you know, this application came in after we already had these distance waivers in place, correct? So this is somebody who decided to take a risk and see if we would approve it?
That is correct. The applicant was aware that there was the distance requirement in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, you're muted.
So Flynn, how much work did they go through before they asked for this waiver? How much money did they have to expend?
I, I wouldn't be able to tell you how much money they've expended to this point. Obviously, they put some money into the architectural drawings that you see in the backup materials there. It's our policy not to allow them to submit their administrative permit where a distance waiver is required, nor do we have them go through an architectural review process prior to the distance waiver. We want city council to consider the distance waiver first before we have them go through our other processes related to cannabis approvals.
Thank you. Flynn, is, are they, they're adequately parked for this?
Are adequately parked based on their square footage and the limitation on the number of seats in the lounge area. Yes.
Very small, okay. And then my understanding was one of the, there are two tenants on the second floor, one was supportive and one we haven't heard from. Is that still correct?
Believe that to be correct, yes.
Okay. And I presume, you may not know this, but do we know if those are month-to-month tenants or?
No, I don't know. No, I don't know what their tenancy is.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, or let's move to comments?
I'll start the comments. I'm very torn on this one. I'm very torn because this is a building that has been underutilized, and I don't see any, especially with the current economic situation that we're in, it being utilized in the near future. And there are, granted, there is another lounge not too far away from this one, but we're not in an over-concentration like we were really, the intent of the ordinance was when we were downtown. And I think any improvement, so the reason I'm torn, and I have not talked to the applicant about this, the applicant did try and get a hold of me, but I did not talk to the applicant. I did read the letters, both pro and against it, that most of the letters against it had to deal with competition. But it's just, I really dislike seeing vacant buildings in our downtown, and this is not even in the core of our downtown business core, where I think it would have such a negative impact on the surrounding businesses or the neighborhood. But I am still very torn, and I'd love to hear from my other council members.
Councilmember Middleton.
Uh, I'm not inclined to grant this waiver. Councilmember Woods makes a very good case that this has been a building that has been vacant for a very long period of time. Unfortunately, there are a number of properties across Palm Springs that have been vacant for a long period of time. This is a industry that has some exceptional promise, but for the most part, those promises have failed to materialize in terms of cannabis being a great revenue generator for our community. And I believe we should be cautious in granting waivers until this industry can begin to stabilize.
I'm welcome. I also am not inclined to grant it. I really feel like it's important for us to follow what we've decided in terms of the distance. I understand that there are reasons for exceptions. I don't think that this is one. And it's also, I don't want us to get into a place either where we, because we're just at the beginning of this process, these are fairly new distance requirements, that we get in the habit of approving, 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 because that just sends the wrong message as well for what we're looking for. I just, I agree, I think staff's arguments make sense.
So I'm leaning in that direction, but I'm a little bit torn. I mean, the main thought on waivers were, when you have situations where buildings are not being used by anything else, sort of where lighthouses, where the bank's going, and no one really had a use for them, and this fits that. But being two stores away, I do feel we end up with a little, we also didn't want little, what feel like little cannabis pockets by having them that close together as well. I'm less concerned on the competition because we let another bar or restaurant go in, and we have, you know, 100 more than we're allowed to under alcohol rules without giving waivers of necessity and convenience. I'm much more concerned about, it's a legal business, and, you know, people who do well do well, and people who don't don't. And I, I'm comfortable with that piece of it. And I'm glad this comes to us first, so people don't invest a lot, and they did it knowingly, which, this is like one store down, and the only way I'd be comfortable with it, but first we have to see if there have been three people who are open to it, is I'd want some really strong protections for the tenants upstairs. What I don't want is tenants to get evicted shortly after this happens and it turns into office space or something else. We have enough problems with rental units, and that, I want something like that in it if people are even inclined to go this way. And I don't know where I would go now. I'm concerned how close this, this is right next to another one. So Mayor Protem Hostage, if you want to weigh in?
Councilmember Garner, gonna, did you raise your hand?
Oh, sorry. Okay.
I was just listening and learning from my council members. I think this is a difficult one. You know, I've never been a fan of the 500-foot separation requirement, because I think we did initially say that we would treat these, obviously, they're legal businesses, that we would treat them as such, like bars, you know, and consider it that way, but though we need to kind of make sure that there's not over-concentration. You know, we're in a different place than we were, I think, a year or two ago, and maybe we're not there right now, but in, you know, the city where we need businesses, we have a lot of vacant storefronts, we need revenue. I don't know if we're going to be in a place to deny, you know, feasible businesses for empty storefronts. So we've, empty storefronts is something that's been so important for us as a council and for our economic task force with me and the mayor that we've been trying to solve. One problem is that we have really high rents that landlords sit on, and they just keep them vacant, even if they lowered their rent, they could have other uses. You know, so that's something to balance, too, because they know they can get, either they don't need the revenue for the income for the lease, or, you know, they just long-term owned it. So those are my concerns. I am concerned about the tenants above the site, you know, if they roll over or turn over, you know, what's the plan for, to protect those tenants, and what are the health risks for them? That's my kind of major concern. I'm less concerned about, you know, the over-concentration with two and the 500 feet, because I think that's something we've allowed before. This is an area of Palm Canyon that we want to invest in, that we want to have thriving more and more. So I think it's different than when we're looking more towards the, you know, thriving, more thriving downtown. So those are some of my considerations. I just wanted to hear from the council where they are, but, you know, staff is recommending denial. You know, I'm interested to hear more about those reasons if we need to.
Councilmember Garner.
I do want to just say something briefly about the two being close by, because yes, and without any distance waivers, then there could easily be two businesses of the same next to each other. But because we put these distance waivers in, I think there are cannabis businesses that are relying on that. I know that they also know that it's possible that we could grant a variance, but they are largely going, okay, I have a 500-foot buffer, and they're kind of relying on that when they're opening their business, too. So I, it's not an end-all for me, because again, they know that there's still a risk that there could be a variance allowed, but it is something that I think about. I don't, and I think that's, you know, for me, it makes sense to just kind of consider that as we're thinking about variances.
Yeah, that's why I don't like the 500 feet as a policy, because we've said you should not rely on this to get approval, and you should not rely on it to, you know, get denial if you're an existing business. So it's like a non-reliant situation, where we've, I think, been really clear about that, but people do rely on it. And on the other side, people invest to move forward, and I'm glad we fixed that loophole, where we had people bringing forward really comprehensive projects, and then we were in a bind. So I hear you, but I think we have been pretty clear about it's not a reliance factor.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. You know, I'm still a little bit torn on the whole thing. In this particular instance, I think, let me back up a minute. When we started on the planning commission, you know, we really wanted to make sure that any sort of cannabis business went above and beyond its kind of architectural integrity and its beauty and its urban form and its interaction with the public right of way. I think we have an opportunity, potentially have an opportunity here to up that building's game, but it's going to be more than just the first floor. Because if you drive by that building now, the second floor where the tenants are, the awnings are all tattered and ripped, and it just doesn't look like a building you want to just help the first floor on. So if we were to go in any direction to approve it, I would really ask for a more comprehensive look at the building as a whole and see if the operator is willing to make that investment at this point in time or not. So just another kind of thought on the whole process.
Interesting. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Middleton.
Yeah, thank you. If we're going to get to the point where we want to revisit the 500-foot rule, I think that's a very appropriate discussion to have, but it's one that I believe we should have addressing the broad area of cannabis dispensaries in the city and this product or this industry. But we have a staff report here that pretty clearly defines that they cannot make three out of the four findings that are necessary for a waiver. And the one compelling argument is that it is a underutilized building that needs to be refurbished. But that will only happen to the extent that this dispensary turns out to be a profitable venture. And I'm not in a position to be able to know that that is going to happen.
I had a question, but I forgot it.
I think we've talked it through. It's probably time to...
Oh, I did have a question, actually. Now I remember. It was Flynn. So if this is a lounge that allows smoking, how is the odor controlled, given there are tenants upstairs?
Mr. Mayor, in terms of the odor control, the applicant would be required to submit an odor control plan. What we would have to verify is that the odor control plan could address the odors from the lounge and would protect the upstairs tenants from any unwanted odors and fumes. So it'd be through our administrative review process of the odor control plan.
Okay. And how late can the lounge stay open?
I believe in the applicant's materials, the lounge would stay open until 10:00 P.M. if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Anyone can make a motion here. You need a motion to approve, or do you also need a motion not to approve? Either way?
I will make a motion to not approve the waiver.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Um, yeah. I really listened to Mayor Protem closely, and I think there's some validity in what Mayor Protem had to say. I also listened to Commissioner, Councilmember Middleton, and the same thing. But I think the investment, they would have to make the investment upfront. So the entire investment, both interior and exterior, whether it works or not with a mixed-use project like this, has to all be done upfront before they open. So the investment in the property, the investment in the business plan, the investment in the odor control equipment is not a cheap and inexpensive thing. And we have our experts on board to assure that those plans work. So I'm, it's tough to say no to an investment on a part of town that needs a facelift. It's just tough to do that. That, you know, and it's also tough to have, and I just don't think that there's going to be a propensity of more businesses, more dispensaries coming into that area. And I just, I don't like to see our main thoroughfares look blighted. So that's where the tough decision is for me, and I just wanted to offer that before we go to a vote.
No, I share that, and I guess the one thing I would want to maybe know, and maybe this is a question to the applicant, is what kind of tenant protections are they willing to put in? That these remain rental units, that they're not going to be raising rents more than cost of living? I think that's going to be something I would want to know before I made my final decision and buy myself another 10 minutes to think about this. So is that something we can ask the applicant on phone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll get that applicant on the phone in just one second.
Thank you.
Hello, Ivy Bader.
Yes.
This is a city council meeting. The council members asked what kind of tenant protections would be in place to ensure that the upstairs tenants are not displaced or evicted at a later time.
Yes, yes, absolutely. So first things first, we previously had two tenants. One of them was finishing their residency at Loma Linda. He has moved out as of May 1st. He chose not to renew his lease. The second, we have offered the tenants options to renew for as long as they want. We don't want to make them feel like they have to move, we're not raising any rates on their rent, especially due to the pandemic. These are tenants that wrote letters of support, and they're in the record. And also, I want to point out that we have gone through land use review, and we have submitted an odor control plan to the city of Palm Springs, and it was approved. And not only that, we went around to all of the neighbors. There's like three different residential streets to the east, and we actually handed each resident that opened their door a copy of the city-approved odor control plan. And so we have applied, we just weren't issued the permit, the regulatory permit, until we get the waiver.
Other questions through the applicant?
Yeah, I'll ask a question. Yes, maybe Anthony has to ask it through me. Are you willing to do a lot more exterior architectural improvements to the property? I take it you own the property? And are you willing to do that?
Yes. Yes, the applicant owns the property and would be willing to make substantial upgrades to the outside if that is what city council wants to see.
Thank you. And is the applicant willing for the existing tenant to agree that the tenant can stay as long as they want with no more than cost of living increases each year?
I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear you. Can you say that again?
Mr. Mayor, let me repeat the question. The mayor wants to know if the property owner is willing to put in protections to ensure that the tenant will not have a rent increase more than the cost of living, as well as, for as long as they would like, until they're ready to leave.
Yes. Yes, the applicant is willing to do that, of course.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Garner.
I just have a question for staff, so we can...
Oh, okay. Well, thank you to the applicant's representatives.
Ivy, we're going to disconnect now.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So my question for staff is that the applicant mentioned that they put in an odor control plan, and I'm just curious if this is supposed to be the first step with the variance, why an odor control plan was submitted? I mostly just want to make sure that, I know for me, if I were a business owner and I started jumping through a bunch of hoops and then... started jumping through a bunch of hoops and then was denied something like this, I'd be really frustrated. But I just want to be clear on what this process is and understand if maybe we need to make a change.
In terms of the odor control plan, the applicant has submitted items for their administrative permit, including the odor control plan. But staff will not process that or approve it until the waiver is approved. What we don't want to do is have people go through the process, have their administrative permit approved, and not be approved on the land use side of things. So again, they have submitted those materials, but we have not approved them.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, because I believe I understood her to say that they had sent around the approved plan to the neighbors. Is that what everyone else heard?
They have prepared an odor control plan, but again, we have not approved their administrative permit.
Thank you, Flynn. This is a little bit frustrating for me, because again, I think that we want to make sure that we're business-friendly, and by being friendly to businesses, it means that we're following a process and making it clear all the way down the line so that they don't get into situations like this. It's not clear to me if they were confused about what they were submitting and what the process was, or if they just decided to move along because they felt very confident. But I do want to just make sure that we're kind of thinking about that as we're doing this, and maybe we can just get a little bit more information from regarding what exactly is told to cannabis businesses when they're going through this process, or any other business for that matter.
Yeah. So following up, Flynn, did they need to do an odor control plan at this point? And is staff just not reviewing it until, or did they just choose to do it even though it wasn't on the list of things they had to do before they got the waiver if they were going to get one?
They have already submitted that to the Office of Special Programs. If I could just back up for one minute in terms of what staff is directing applicants relative to facilities or properties that may require a distance waiver. With the adoption of our new standards in December of 2019, anyone who has submitted an application after that date, we are informing them that a distance waiver would be required, that we will not review or issue their administrative permit until the distance waiver is approved, and then looking specifically at what they are proposing relative to the distance waiver if it does not meet the criteria that it's not going to be approved. So we're very clear with applicants, again, anyone who has submitted after December of 2019, that distance waivers are not an automatic approval, that there are criteria that have to be met, and we typically discourage applicants from going through the process if they cannot meet the findings that are necessary for that distance waiver.
Thank you, Flynn. That's really helpful.
And what was the date they applied or started the process?
I was afraid you were going to ask me that question. I believe we received their application materials either in February, is what I'm guessing. And I apologize, I don't have their application directly here in front of me this evening.
So it was after December?
After December.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protem Hostage?
Thank you. So I think I understand that staff hasn't reviewed the odor control plan in any way since it wasn't required at this stage, and that's why it's not included in our packet. And I assume you then have no opinions about the odor control plan?
No, I have not reviewed it.
So then, you know, because I'm looking at the conditions, the findings that we need to make in this item, so one is, you know, will not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare of people residing or working on the site or in the vicinity. So that's the major finding that I'm concerned about, but that seems dependent a bit on the odor control plan and how it might affect tenants who live above it. So do you want to talk a little bit about staff's determinations and findings of fact under each of those findings that we need to make tonight?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. In terms of the criteria that we look at relative to distance waivers, as I had mentioned, the first is consistency with the city's general plan and zoning requirements. As I had indicated, the application is consistent with the zoning. The dispensary use is permitted in the zoning district where the building is located, and so we do find consistency there. The second thing we look at is impact to neighboring properties. And in considering this criterion, we're looking at the dispensary use relative to not only the residents that are located above in the same building, but there is also a multifamily property immediately north of this parcel. We're also looking at overall impact to adjacent businesses. What impact does having two dispensaries within 60 feet of each other impact the remaining commercial businesses? Just from an urban design standpoint, while there are certain benefits of clustering, certain types of businesses, restaurants, for example, are ones that you like to see clustered together. Cannabis dispensaries, I'm not so sure that having them in this close proximity is beneficial. And so going to the third criterion of general health and welfare, I don't feel that it meets that criterion in terms of there is no impact to general health and welfare by having these businesses clustered so closely together. The fourth criterion is relative to any unique characteristics of the property that would warrant the approval of the waiver. And this is a commercial property that really is no different in terms of its size or shape or configuration from any other commercial property. As I had mentioned, the only thing that really comes to mind relative to that criterion is the fact that the tenant space on the ground floor of the subject building does not appear to have had a user over the last number of years. And so that's really the only thing that we could find there. But again, we cannot make the findings on three of the four criteria that we have for the approval of the distance waiver.
Thank you. And then these are, sorry, I have to recuse for the general conversation when we set this new policy to fix some of these issues that have been ongoing. Though I have checked with the city attorney, and I don't need to recuse here. So are these further defined? That's what I was trying to get to, is sort of what is the definition in the code for these criteria?
No, they aren't further defined. They are, as you see them, in the language of the code itself. And these are consistent with other findings that we have relative to entitlement applications.
Thank you. So then looking at the separation distance map, I'm just wondering sort of how we got to, if we look at the more downtown area, we have regulatory permit issued, so we have a number that are similarly distanced more in the downtown. So can you explain, is that because we had a different system, or were the findings different for that area of town? Why is it different here with two close together within the 500 feet where we've allowed that a number of times in the past?
Certainly. In terms of the other ones that you see, they're clustered north of the subject site on Palm Canyon Drive. Those went into those spaces prior to the adoption of our new separation distance requirements in December of 2019. Also, there's a number of those that had received waivers approved by city council. So again, they were under different standards. Some of them did have waivers that were approved.
Thank you. My last question, the applicant indicated they would be willing to invest or change more in the facade of the building and perhaps meet criteria D to justify by features or site conditions the part of the project. So does staff have a recommendation on that, if there is something staff would see that would justify it? And before I ask you that question, I'll just say, you know, I'm wondering if this is something where staff would go back and work with the applicant so we could actually see something, to councilmember Woods's point. However, I also care about being business-friendly and having businesses rely on our word and not go through a process that they're not going to, you know, be successful in. So if it is the will of the city council to deny this application, then I wouldn't want to do that. But Flynn, could you talk a little bit about the criteria D, what might justify, as well as perhaps if staff has a recommendation based on the new information from the applicant, or if staff's recommendation is the same?
Decision would change relative to criterion D, other than, as I had mentioned, it's been a vacant tenant space. That's the only thing that might fall into the category of being unique about the property. But again, going back to the basic standards of it's not unusual in terms of its size, configuration, location, et cetera. On the issue of improvements to the building, which has been brought up a number of times, keep in mind that we still have an architectural review process that's required for dispensary businesses. If you were to approve this distance waiver this evening, the applicant would then need to go through the architectural review process. The proposed improvements to the exterior of the building would be reviewed by the Architectural Advisory Committee and then forwarded to city council on your consent agenda. So in terms of the concerns of the improvements that would be made to the building, that is something that could be addressed during the architectural review process if you were to approve the distance waiver.
Thank you.
Nothing else? I think...
No. I have a question. This is a question for Flynn. Flynn, when a cannabis facility, dispensary, and lounge comes in, they need a security plan that might include cameras as well as personnel?
Administrative regulations... Oh, sorry, I need to back up. The mic wasn't on. In your administrative regulations in Chapter 5.55 of the Muni Code, it does require that the applicant submit a security plan as part of their administrative permit. And so that's something that Veronica's team and the police department would review as part of the administrative permit. But yes, they would require cameras and other things to guarantee security on the site.
And Rockstar, which is just down this, which is down the street, has a translucent window. Is that correct? Where you can't really see into the building?
I believe that to be the case with the Rockstar facility. That was one of the ones that was approved prior to your enhanced architectural review process that you have for dispensaries.
And this dispensary and lounge, you'll actually, like Lighthouse, be able to see within the building as you walk on by, giving kind of contextual context to the sidewalk?
That's correct. The lobby space occupies most of the front facade where the windows of the tenant space are. And so you'll have a lobby space which will be visible from the street. The lounge is obviously per state law, not visible from the street. The dispensary, I believe there's one of the windows is open to the dispensary. But for the most part, the lobby area occupies most of the front facade of the building.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So we have a motion to deny the waiver by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Garner.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
No.
Mayor Protem Hostage?
No.
Mayor Coors?
It's hoping this will be unlightened. I'm going to vote no.
Motion fails. Two to three.
So now, is there another motion?
I'll make a motion in the alternative to approve, to grant the administrative minor modification for relief from the separation requirement and making the findings that are consistent with approving the AMA.
I make a friendly amendment.
Yes, please.
That the two tenant rental units will remain rental units for as long as the business exists, and that any existing tenants will not be evicted without cause and have no more than annual cost of living rental increase.
Yes, I accept those friendly amendments. And I think Councilmember Wood had one as well when we are deliberating.
Yes, I would like to see an enhanced architectural improvement to both the first and the second floor for the entire building as it goes through the architectural review process.
Thank you. So I'll incorporate both of those into my original motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant the waiver with various other things, by Mayor Protem Hostage, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Mayor Protem Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
No.
Councilmember Middleton?
No.
Mayor Coors?
No. Although, yes.
Motion passes, three to two.
And I do want to note, this is an example where we have really thoughtful discussions. I think everyone was open to different views, and I think many of us changed our minds back and forth several times during this. And one thing I do hear from people, cannabis and other things, is they're not, who go to many meetings, you know, represent lots of clients, they're not used to a council who deliberates as much as we do, and how much they appreciate the fact that we do it. And I know that came up earlier, but this is just another example that a lot of thought goes into these things, I think by all of us, before the meetings and at the meetings. And really appreciated that discussion, because this was a very close call, I think. So thank you, everyone. Our next comment, and I want to note, we just finished Thursday night's agenda items, finishing at 12:15 on Thursday and 11:04 tonight. I really appreciate all the work and staff and the public who are paying attention to this. It's a lot of hours, and appreciate everyone for their efforts and engagement bearing this. So now we have public comment on non-agenda items. This time is set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest. Within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city, although city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Ten minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone. We apologize that it's 11:05 p.m. The city clerk, please begin.
Hello, Robin Rodriguez. This is the Palm Springs City Council. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments regarding public comment.
Mr. Mayor and city council, I understand there's a petition for the removal of former Mayor Frank Bogert's statue by David Weiner, who's lived for a total of 16 years, stating that Mayor Bogert should be removed due to racism. Don't let Palm Springs become like other parts of the country and destroy history, or take it upon yourselves to decide what you think needs removing because you belong to a certain group. You must be for all Palm Springs residents. As a native of Palm Springs for 60 years, I care a great deal about preserving Palm Springs' history, and Mayor Bogert was a big part of it. I will end with this. If Palm Springs is for all colors, gender, sexual preference, then show you're not racist and allow it to stay. You cannot be one-sided. You have to be for all of us. And this kind of petition is just more of the chaos that's going on all over the country. It solves nothing, and it certainly won't bring us all together. You cannot remove everything offensive to some and think we're all going to reunite. I urge you to please keep the statue of a man that loved and... I urge you to please keep the statue of a man that loved and served the city of Palm Springs where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hello, Edwin Ramoran?
Hi, Anthony.
Hi. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, good evening, good morning. Palm Springs City Staff and Council. Happy Gay Pride Month, the way before the end of June. I serve on the city's Human Rights Commission and Senate Committee, and I'm making public comments tonight at Annyhan Desert. I look forward to the City Council... Okay. Despite what has happened tonight, I'm very upset by the vote around the budget, but we could talk about that later. What I'm... want to say is that I'm... I will still say this. I'm excited. I am optimistic. I am part of the countless numbers of energized volunteers who were born and raised here and have newly committed ourselves to working across generations, bettering our neighborhoods, and around diversity, equity, and inclusion. When the equestrian cowboy sculpture of Frank Bogart gets removed from the lawn of City Hall, we shall rejoice. I look forward to the City Council unanimously voting to remove it. This can be your legacy to stand firm, shoulder to shoulder, residents on the side of racial justice. The city of Palm Springs still has not even issued an official apology to the numerous core, working-class, black and brown Palm Springs residents burnt out of their homes in Section 14 in the 1950s. When will this apology happen? Get it on your calendar immediately, please, City Council. When will the legacy of discriminatory racist class white property be addressed head-on? That Bogart sculpture is just a masculine racist sculpt in the collection of the city of Palm Springs, prominently seated on the lawn in the front of the motto, "The equal are the city." It doesn't say Frank Bogart is the city. Like many public collections, I know you can deaccession it, sell it, make some money for the city's budget to help our underserved communities of color and invaluable community centers. City Council, please question gentrification and environmental racism and environmental classism. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Bogart. Hello?
Dottie Wilder, you're live with the City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, am I live now?
Yes.
Because I heard somebody else was talking.
No, you can begin.
Okay. My name is Dottie Wilder, and I'm calling, ready 11 hours to give my two-minute statement about the statue of Frank Bogart. Frank Bogart, I was appalled when I heard that somebody is labeling him racist. He came here in 1927. He died in 2009. Frank gave more of his life, his time, his energy, his heart and soul to Palm Springs, and for a longer period of time than anybody else who's ever lived here. He was visible all over town. He took part in everything, if you didn't bring the activities to the desert. He participated in helping them become a success for every joy, every age group, every socioeconomic groups, every religious group, every skin color, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. He was, he was a bigger-than-life man. He was also, people looked up to him as a role model. He was, he made Palm Springs fun to live in. When I came to Palm Springs in 1956, it was one-stoplight in town. It was mostly open desert. I rode horses on Section 14 between sunrise and Indian. Talk with the dirt road. There were a lot of structures that were built on there that were not up to any code, and the Indians owned Section 14. So Frank Bogart did not clear that land off by himself. He could not do that. And at that time, the tribal chiefs were flying back and forth to the Bureau of Indian Affairs in Washington, DC, to, you know, discuss how they could handle the land and ask for longer leases, because at the time it was a short lease. And so anything they did was a collaborative effort with the Indians, with the city, with any other people. And that was a square mile in middle of downtown, which would have been cleared off at some point. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Brad Anderson. You're live with the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Ranshmaras, and I was going to talk about the vector control district out in Indio, California, and how they're ripping everybody off in taxes, but, and not doing their job. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about face masks. I was awesome part of your meeting earlier tonight, and you had one of your council members talk about misinformation, people purposely misinforming people about face masks and so forth. And I don't see that at all. I see this council doing that tonight, and it's shameful, really. And, but my understanding a couple of weeks ago, did all the mayors get together with the District 4 Supervisor, Mr. Perez, and came to incisives or concluded that face masks were gonna be one of the issues? And, and I find it, I knew this was coming for a while, but apparently the council is falling in line with this. And it seems like gyms is one of the talking points. And I don't know, if I owned a gym, I would probably sue for slander, because everybody's saying how dirty they are. And, and I don't understand where that information came from. And it is, did the tracers leak that to COVID? Is that to DOR? And the same with bars. I mean, where's the information? Where's the, where's the information? I mean, what about all the protesters? I mean, did the tracers track them too? I doubt it. But anyway, I'm gonna close with security and the security of your citizens. And when you have good security and, and good information, it improves the quality of life for everybody. And, and again, you, you serve, you serve the people, the residents of your city, but you also serve this region. So I just hope, hope you can work to be better. Thank you very much. Again, thank you, Brad Anderson. Bye-bye.
Disconnect.
Good evening.
Yes, this is Luke. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and if you could begin by stating your name?
Good evening. This is Luke Lobal.
I'm sorry, Luke, could you reduce the volume? We're having a hard time hearing. Thank you.
Sorry, I was watching the City Council meeting. Good evening. My name, good evening, City Council members. My name is Luke Lobal Creamy. I spent four years in the United States Marine Corps, and I was fortunate enough to spend, to be in the JOTC program at Palm Springs High School. I would be very grateful if the council gave an extension to the JOTC program for another year, again, at Palm Springs High School. I think we, we need to understand the value of training of future generation and our youth. This would help the discipline of our young. Also, this gives our children a sense of direction, discipline, honor, and integrity. Excuse me, integrity. I wish also to be part of the program in terms of as an advisor, to some fact that I did spend four years in the Marine Corps as a corporal. And also, I was there during, I spent four years doing, when I was a child there. Anyway, to finish up, I would love to do this, I'll do this for free. Anyway, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing me. Is there anything? Yes, sir.
Before you disconnect, you may want to contact City Hall tomorrow, so I can give you more information. You may want to contact the Palm Springs Unified School District as well.
So contact City Hall?
Yeah, if you, you call my office tomorrow, the same people that you called to register for making this comment, we'll give you some contact information for the school district.
Okay, see.
Or actually, Luke, I'll give you a call tomorrow myself, so we can, because I'll need to disconnect now.
Roger that. Anyway, thank you very much, and you have a good evening to all of you. Bye.
Good evening, Harrison.
Hi, Harriet Henderson Harris. This is the Palm Springs City Council. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, just, I grew up, I grew up in Palm Springs, so I was a kid during Section 14. So it's a kid's perspective that I saw mostly. These were shacks. These were just cardboard and wooden shacks that, that the city council, that the Indians, that people would want to move that from downtown Palm Springs was, once the Indians got the opportunity to do 99-year leases, was for, for everyone's benefit. I, again, I don't know the particulars of the Indians wanting people to move, and I just, I just know that for looking to hold on to that property, I don't blame people for not putting any money into their homes because they didn't own no homes. They, it was short-term leases, and so it was very cheap, but it was, it was unhealthy in terms of fire danger, health danger, and just, it was a slum. It was a cardboard. It was what you would see today from, from basically a homeless camp. And so that's my two cents. I don't think Frank, from knowing Frank as kind of, he was my parents' generation, and so just a distant family friend, but never knew him to be anything but pro-Palm Springs, not anti-anybody, just always pro-Palm Springs. And that's, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, and we'll disconnect now.
Okay.
Hello, David Weiner?
Hello?
Hello, David Weiner?
Yes.
This is the Palm Springs City Council. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay. Hi, I'm a councilman. My name is David Weiner. I am a 16-year resident of Palm Springs. I'm speaking to request the addition of the item to one of the upcoming City Council meetings for removal of the statue of Mayor Frank Bogart, which is in Palm Springs City Hall. As you're aware, I started a petition on date of order to garner support for the removal of the statue of Mayor Bogart, who had a well-staffed role in welcoming hundreds of primarily minority residents out of Section 14 to the outskirts of town. As of today, we have almost 2,200 signatories to this petition, and I will be submitting the petition and signers to you tomorrow. Many residents of Palm Springs do not know the history of Section 14, but Mayor Bogart was instrumental in these policies of forced relocation, and in fact, in some cases, served as a conservator for tribal members who owned the land and personally signed some... All of you on the council know people whose families were relocated in the 60s. The California Attorney General's Office issued a report in 1968 that blasted the city's actions in this relocation, closing the report with, "Palm Springs ignored that the residents of Section 14 were human beings." I can only imagine how a resident whose grandparents were forcibly relocated to other areas of town must feel, ungoing to City Hall for services and seeing a statue of the man responsible for these places so prominently displayed. We are facing a national discussion on race relations and how we can all be better and do better. Society has evolved. Opinions and views change, and we become more sensitive to the pain and hurt of our fellow humans. We cannot change the events that occurred 60 years ago, but we can start a conversation and listen to each other. Removing the statue won't erase the hip.
I'm sorry, sir, your, your time is over now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, George Clare. This is the Palm Springs City Council. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. Darrell Terrell.
This is he.
You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay. Let me start out by saying the obvious. We are dealing with a deadly serious situation right now in our county when it comes to COVID-19. It's more important than politics. It's about our loved ones, and we will do anything we can to make sure that they are protected. Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Temp, Councilmember Garner, Councilmember Woods, Councilmember Middleton. That's what you did in giving people hope, but most importantly, keeping people alive. I've been amazed, not only about your compassionate leadership, but at the incredible bravery of the doctors and nurses, healthcare workers at Desert Regional Medical Center, who are doing God's work. Can you imagine the nurses who leave their home in the morning and who kisses their kids goodbye and go to the hospital and put on a gown, deal with people who have the COVID virus? They're thinking all day long, oh my God, I hope I don't get this. Oh my God, I hope I don't bring it home to my kids. You want to talk about extraordinary individuals. It's these folks, including our police officers and firefighters, our grocery store workers, the truck drivers. They're worried. They're going out there every day despite their fears, overcoming their fears, and not for their families. They're doing it for our families because they understand one point thing, that we're in this together, and we're going to get through this together by doing our part and wearing a mask. And that's how your community flattened the curve, and that's how the entire county can flatten the curve with community unity. That's what wearing the mask says, respect and unity. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hello, Patricia. You're live with the Palm Springs City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and if you could begin by stating your name.
My name is Patricia Patzner Salay Swaim, and I'm calling about the Frank Bogart statue. My family moved to Palm Springs in 1946 when Indian Canyon was still a dirt road. People rode up and down it on horseback as the uncapped hot mineral waters ran by. There was no spa hotel, no desert art museum, no mid-century modern. It was a horsey town with yearly parades featuring riders in fancy gear. Today's tourists have no idea. The statue of Frank Bogart on horseback in front of City Hall is the only prominent reminder. Bogart moved here before 1946 and was elected mayor twice. He sold Palm Springs his whole life. In about 1961, when the Smithsonian put up a display calling the sad dwellings on Section 14, particularly the cardboard huts of alcoholics creating an eyesore a block from downtown, the other Palm Springs. It made the glamorous people of the desert look like slumdog millionaires. Although it was tribal land, the city council knew it was time to clean up. But Bogart himself gave himself to the rescue of those whites, blacks, Indians, and Hispanics who would find themselves with no place to go and spearheaded finding better homes for them they could afford. Low-cost rentals were built at the north end of town, and many blacks made it their own. The Indians benefited a great deal from clearing their land, but the displaced didn't like it. Some unfairly put the blame on Bogart as a bigot. He was bigger than life, but bigotry was not his game. He was all about Palm Springs, and he loved all kinds of people. I knew him, and there are at least 1,000 or more of us who are writing letters to say, please, don't take down his statue.
Thank you, Patricia, and your time is up.
Hello?
Hello, Mary Balnunias. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you so much. Hi, everyone. This is Mary Balnunias, advocate here in Palm Springs in the Equity Partnership. And I was just reading an article right now that we're over about 53%, just depending on looking at the US labor statistics of unemployment. And so it's very staggering about what we now are seeing potentially with the second wave of COVID-19. But I do want to share, you know, just a reflection of the passing of the budget, that my hope is that we could definitely do better. And you feel that our budget does reflect our values. And I think that looking at, you know, the community's input, and I have talked to a lot of folks that, you know, some are for defunding, some are not, but definitely across the board, everyone that we're talking to definitely is in favor of demilitarizing the police budget. So yeah, I was in support of more investments in economic development and also in parks. And so it's very disappointing that there was no increased investment. There wasn't increased in the police department. So, and there was a commitment from the last city council that you all made that we would look through the police department to pay for it and not an increased funding for those police cameras. So what I encourage is, you know, going into the next budget cycle, that you mean what a group of us, so that we do more of a prioritizing-based budgeting. It's been already happening in Riverside. We could do it in Palm Springs. But yeah, more investments in housing and health is something really important. Palm Springs could definitely set the example, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Hello, Zach Solomon. This is the Palm Springs Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Sure, I don't think it'll take two minutes. Hello, Palm Springs City Council. This is Zach Solomon. Thank you so much for working again in short notice. Have to say that the vote on the budget tonight was disappointing. However, you have a, it is now a running budget, which I'm appreciative that you voted for that to be a running budget, so it's something that we can continue to work on. And you will continue to hear from me and many of my peers, who will not stop communicating with you about what we want a police budget to be, what I want my tax dollars to go to, how I want policing to be in the city and throughout the country. And I think Palm Springs shows a precedent. This current city council is progressive compared to other city councils locally, and I think you set a tone of what the rest of the Coachella Valley does. I care about all of the Coachella Valley, and I think you have a role in leadership here that is a high platform of what we will do moving forward. And I hope that you all really do take on the mantle of being the progressive leadership that we need and specifically start showing care instead of policing. And I just want to say that, you know, the fact that our police department, that the first people who would get fired would be women or people of color, if there was going to be a decrease in staffing of police, is atrocious. That's not, that's not a fair carrot to dangle in front of us as an option. I do want to see less police. I want to see the average come down to a person rate that is at least the average of what is going on in the country. I want to see police out of environments that they don't need to be in. And I want to see it be something that is for me and not for a select few. My perspective is that the police in Palm Springs and the overabundance of them is a byproduct of a select few wanting that, and that's it. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Lauren Wolford. This is the Palm Springs Council meeting. You're live with council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I just wanted to say, in light of our recent spike in COVID-19 infections, and especially with our hospitals either at or closely nearing capacity, I hope that the Palm Springs City Council is open to considering another shutdown of short-term vacation rentals and hotels. This is really not a great time for tourism right now, and especially if there's going to be a strain on our local health resources. We need to make sure that we're reserving those for our own residents. And in addition to that, I hope that the council would also be open to shutting down in-room dining in restaurants as well. I do understand that it would, you know, ideally, this would come from the state or from the county, but unfortunately, there hasn't been a lot of great leadership elsewhere. And, you know, I think that the fact that the city was so bold in, you know, acting early on and being one of the first to adopt shelter plays, that was extremely commendable, and we need that local leadership going forward. And it's just my, it concerns me that business leaders, you know, just naturally, they have more influence. Their voices get heard more. And I know a lot of people in the service industry that are working because they have to, because otherwise, they don't get unemployment, and are very scared of getting infected. And these are the people who are getting infected. And I realize that these are very difficult decisions to make, and I thank you all so much for your leadership. But I just want to make sure, again, that this is a progressive city, so let's always make sure that we're putting people before profit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Hello?
Hello, Ronnie Jones. You're live at the Palm Springs City Council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Great, thank you very much. Really appreciate everyone who stayed up and called in and shared their views with us. One of the things, we're going to move to upcoming council and agenda items, and I think any council member comments, since we didn't do it normally. And one thing I'd like us to talk about is maybe we agree that when meetings go to 10:00 p.m., we take a break for public comment, because calling people after 11:00 p.m. just doesn't feel reasonable. I know the meetings are to deal with business and the agendas, which is why we do these at the end, but I think we need to come up with a timeframe, and we know we're going to do that. So while that's fresh in my head from calling people up till 11:40 p.m., I am thinking it was Thursday night and looking forward to Friday and realizing it was Tuesday night, I think it would be a good thing for us to just discuss how we do public comment, or at least set a time when we want to do public comment on non-agenda items when meetings run late. So with that, I think we're at upcoming agenda items. So, City Manager, do you have sort of what's upcoming, and then council member requests?
Actually, Mayor, members of council, at the meeting on next Thursday, week from this Thursday, we're continuing the block grant. We also are going to have a project update, and I believe that the staff report is being finalized for the plastic straws polystyrene ordinance discussion. So those are the main items at this point. Thank you.
Just a reminder, one of the questions I made earlier tonight was that we discuss the $598,000 in state funding and how we can spend it. And if possible, it might be good to do that before the CDVG item, because that may impact how we do CDVG funding, since they have different requirements, or even at the same time, if we can combine them in some way, would be helpful. And just from one thing that came up, as we talked about vacant buildings, I know we've been talking about, and I think the city attorney is working on a vacant building ordinance that will disincentivize landlords from leaving buildings vacant when someone's willing to come in and pay rent, even if it's not the maximum landlords holding out for, hoping that certain types of business might get a waiver, as we discussed earlier. So I don't know if that's ready, but as soon as that's ready, it'd be great to have that come to council before the potential August recess, if that's possible. So that would mean the next meeting, so we could have two readings, if that's workable.
Mayor, I don't think that would be, well, because that agenda is due the day after tomorrow, so I don't think that would be able to be on the next agenda, but certainly the following one.
Okay. And, you know, we could potentially do it as an urgency item as well, given this is sort of urgent right now, given businesses that may be vacating and starting to vacate, to do that. And I think the economic development, business retention liaisons can work with staff to finalize that in a way that we can bring forward a recommendation, hopefully, for council, at least at the second meeting in July, and we can decide. It's urgent based on what we're seeing going on with COVID. I think I saw Councilmember Garner add something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a few things that I wanted to raise. None of this, well, this first part is not urgent, but just things we want to get on the agenda, I think by the end of the summer or maybe October. Just the animal shelter license fees and then the shelter time for pets. We had discussed this before, and, you know, I had pulled some of it because I wanted to have more discussion on the animal shelter, and that's been done. So just wanting that to go back on the agenda. I think they're pretty straightforward items, but we do want to do that before the end of the year. And then the other thing was if we could just put on the calendar for a presentation by the animal shelter at our second meeting in July. They'd like to participate by Zoom and show us some of their animals. We can do that. And then I also just wanted to make note of the discussions that we had today about third-party review of police department, and then the advisory group about public safety generally, and if we could just start working with staff on that. And I think that might just be a couple of us moving forward with that. Then the other thing that I was just thinking about, and I might get pushback on this, but the possibility of allowing residents to record their voice, like a voice memo for public comments, instead of calling them late into the night. We would still play them live to us, but I'm just curious if there's any possibility of doing that and how others feel. I know that that might obviously increase the number of public comments that we get, but I am concerned that our residents clearly are adding their names to the list, but then we're getting a lot of people who are not answering because they're asleep. And even if we call at 10, it's still pretty late.
So why don't we, if it makes sense, since we can't deliberate on that now, that we put an agenda on to discuss, I think specifically, public comment on non-agenda items? I have some ideas as well, and let's just brainstorm some ideas on how we can do them in a way that we hear them, that they're available to the public, whether, you know, if they're recorded during the meeting or online, or however it may be. But let's agendize at least that piece of it, so we can have a discussion on it and brainstorm some ideas together as a group. Anyone else have any requests? Councilmember Middleton?
Just a reminder that back about 12 hours of meeting ago, we have AB 2218 brought before us for support, hopefully, a support position. And additionally, I believe we should author a letter from the entire city council to our representative in Congress and our representative in the legislature outlining how horrific it is that our residents are only valued at $12 when residents in other cities are valued at $174, and that in the allocation of funds, we're taking no recognition of what was the loss of revenue. And for those of us that are in tourist-related communities, we have been devastated, where if you... if you, and every city hurts, but if you're a city that depends on other forms of revenue from sales checks and TOT, the impact has been significantly less.
Thank you, councilmember Middleton. And so for the city manager or city attorney, I'm happy to work with councilmember Middleton on that, if we can maybe just have direction in the agenda on this, and then by council we can bring forward a draft letter or resolution. So thank you for that. I think Mayor Pertham Holstage, I saw a pen or a hand or something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say the listening session that councilmember Garner announced is July 11, 7/11 Day. Maybe we can have ICs. 7/11 Day at 10:00 AM. So councilmember Garner said 11, but it's on our calendars for 10:00 AM. And I just wanted to ask staff if that's only a week and a half away, and that's really only going to be as successful as we push it out on outreach. So I'm wondering with staff, I know you're working with me and councilmember Garner, if we can do a lot of community outreach on that, especially to people, you know, Spanish-speaking communities, people we don't always hear from. So I just want to make sure that we do that. And then I just wanted to ask to clarify the motion, because I think we're, for the budget, that I think we'll be asked about it, and I didn't quite follow at the end there. So there had been a discussion about committing funds to parks, and then I think it was, let's go back to the original motion. So I just wanted to ask the city attorney or the city clerk, if we can clarify for the public what actually was passed in that motion, so we all can be on the same page with that.
I thought the language about relooking at the revenues in September wasn't included. City clerk?
I'm looking at my notes. Give me one second.
Thank you. Not to put you on the spot, if other people have announced, I just wanted to clarify that before the end of the meeting and we get media requests or other requests.
Yeah, my recollection is that we agreed the next chunk of money, I don't remember if it was $2 or $3 million, if, when we reconcile, I think it was $3, will go to parks, and that we would ask Measure J and Parks and Recs to meet and do a lot of public outreach, so people can comment about their priorities for that, whether it's the full downtown park, whether it's the community projects Measure J and Parks and Rec had worked on together, or some combination of the two. So I think it was $3 million. But let's confirm that. And when you're looking, I have two things that I'll throw out. I would like to bring an item on discussion and direction on taking a position on, I believe it's Senate Bill 1410, but the one of evictions for, in the state of California that passed the Senate and is moving to the Assembly. Happy to work on that, probably with Mayor Pertham Holstage. If we have an agenda item, we can work on the language as the affordable housing and homelessness liaisons. And I did have a comment on the listening session. I think we have our normal channels. I want, I'd love to have a Facebook event created that all of us can share as well, you know, where people can RSVP on social media, although I did participate in a week-long boycott of Facebook because of their allowing hate speech and false information. It's a tool a lot of people still use, and we unfortunately still have to use it sometimes. But also, I want to really, and I'll ask the liaisons who are working on this, we still have numerous residents, I think more in District 3 than anywhere, who are renters who are excluded from 1PS by neighborhood organizations that don't let renters vote and are uncovered by 1PS. And I don't want to get into that discussion, we'll have that, but I want, I think we need to mail to those households about this listening session, because they're not going to get it from the neighborhood organizations, because they've been excluded from them. And so I'd really like the liaisons to work with staff on getting a postcard sent out, whether it's to every resident or at least to the people who are not in an organized neighborhood, because otherwise they will not know about this. And I don't think we get to hear from them because of the current situation. And I want to commend, by the way, 1PS leadership for taking this on and committing that they're going to get this done. But this is such an important meeting, and I presume we'll have more of these, and I want to make sure, especially our residents who feel excluded, and residents I heard from when I campaigned in apartments who feel they've been segregated out of community and neighborhood, that they get these notices and they know that they have a voice and get to participate. And given the short notice, and I'm not one of those liaisons, I'll ask the two liaisons to work with staff to see if we can get something out in time to get a mailer out to those residents in English and Spanish who aren't in an organized neighborhood, at the very least.
Mayor, if I could note on that, that if you're suggesting we send basically a citywide mailer announcing the meeting?
I think that's probably best, if we get a postcard. If there's not the bandwidth or the budget to do it, at the very least, let's make sure we're dealing with every address that's not in an organized neighborhood, because that's often how people hear from us.
Well, Mayor, I don't think we have the ability to find out what that is. But also, if we're going to do that, I would suggest that we change the date from the 11th, because I don't think that by the time we get the postcard done and printed and through the mailer, that it, I don't think really it's enough time, because those usually take a few extra days to mail. So we'd probably need to move it to later in July, if that's the will.
Well, I'll ask them to wait, and if they're comfortable, but I'm very concerned for the whole city, but given my district is the largest number of renters who are just going door-to-door to apartments, self-excluded, and they don't get information, I do think this needs to get mailed. I think it's really important that people who are not normally included know about this listening session. So, but I'll leave it up. I don't want to delay it either. So I'll leave that up. Maybe you could work with the liaisons and come to a decision and share that.
Work with, with who? Just so I'm clear, just because this has to be done and there's no budget? First of all, there'd probably be about $8,000. We don't have a budget, so I'd need some appropriation for that. And then we'd need to get it out, like tomorrow, or we push the meeting back, and that might be a better solution.
One of the liaisons, what they would recommend, and share it with you. Councilmember Garner?
Do you, can I speak on that?
I think so. We're not deliberating yet, so the attorney will jump in if we do. Yep.
Yeah, I think if, you know, part of the point is making sure that we're having enough residents participate and that we are including everyone. So I think that putting it into that second week, is it the second or third week, whatever it is, the next available date in July, I think it's fine with me to help with that outreach, especially if it sounds like maybe there possibly isn't funds for doing a mailer, than just thinking of alternative measures to get notices out to those different residents, which might have to be done the way that I've done it in the past, and just putting things up in mailrooms and laundry rooms.
So maybe you and Mayor Pertham Holstage can work with staff on that, and if the cost is reasonable and within the city attorney's budget, we feel we can do it. I think that would be, my view would be worthwhile in English and Spanish to get that out. I'll also encourage the liaisons to work on, I'm sure you probably are, A Valley Voice or The Desert Sun, and working with communications on doing radio shows and TV news programs to really, you know, set this out. And so you set it 10:00 in the morning on a weekend, so we have a whole day to really hear from the community. And the more effort on communicating this to reach audiences, Spanish-language, other things that we don't normally do, and make sure we have ASL and Spanish-language interpreters of this, is going to be critical, which I can't imagine you haven't thought of, but I'll share it since I can't talk to you other than the public meeting on this, because they're still be working on it.
Thank you.
But I really do want to make sure we reach out to everyone on this. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in response, in response to councilmember Holstage's question, in reviewing the motion, I would not say that the portion regarding the $3 million for parks was included in the motion. However, the minutes would reflect that there was general council consensus to agendize that discussion once there was a review of the finances, and I believe it was along the lines of the first week in September that those discussions would begin.
My recollection of the motion, but we can look at video or we can clarify now, is that if after we close the books sometime in September, if we have an extra $3 million that we want to allocate it to parks and we want to process through Measure J and Parks and Rec for their recommendations on how that would be spent prior to coming to council. But councilmember Middleton, I think, made the motion, if I recall.
I did, and I certainly recall that I said that the first $3 million would go to parks. So we can do some research on this, but that was my intent.
And I think it was all the council's intent. If anyone disagrees, say so. Councilmember Woods, you're muted, so jump in.
I remember that we had the discussion on it. I don't know if it made it into the motion. And I don't know if what made into the motion was vetting it through Parks and Rec and Measure J. We did have discussion on that, but I don't know if that made it into the motion. And I believe I seconded that motion.
Yes, you did. So maybe what makes sense is let's watch the video, and if there's lack of clarity on what we think the motion is, we can clarify that at our next meeting, since it wasn't until September that we'd be acting. If that, I just want to ask the city attorney how we best handle this and make sure we're clear.
That would be the prudent course of action here at 2:00 midnight.
Okay. So let's make sure, and if that isn't clear, let's bring it back at the next council meeting to clarify not just the intent, but what exactly is the motion, if it's not clear from the video. Not to ask you to watch more videos, but I know you've watched a lot of old meetings, by the way, lately, so thank you for the city attorney for that. If there's nothing else, we have a minute till midnight. If something else, just keep us going.
Wear your mask.
Yeah. Yeah, I did want to end on that. I just want to say, and I appreciate it, our last speaker's comments, you know, even with people visiting and the numbers going up, our numbers compared to other cities are not going up in the same ways. And that it's really important, people keep in mind, the number of people who are infected is always going to go up because it's cumulative. And so there are four metrics the state is using in making a decision if a county or area is out of compliance, and those are the numbers we really want to focus on, you know, hospitalization, positive test rates, things along those lines. There's a lot more testing. Numbers are always going to go up, but I think what's really noticeable in these numbers is the largest bulk of people getting infected are in the 18 to 60-year-old group, and we're starting to see more deaths in those groups, and we're starting to see people who they think may be permanently impacted. And so protect yourself, protect your family. If we want the economy to stay open, we know that we're in face coverings and practicing social distance will help that happen. So we need to stay community, and we need our, who cares about each other, and we desperately need our visitors to understand that as well. And so I think ending on that note and be kind to each other, these are stressful times for everyone. And even in your emails, try and be kind. We understand people's passions, but understand that we need to really be thoughtful in how we talk to each other right now, because people are stressed and people are going through a lot of anguish and worried about whether they can pay their rent or pay their mortgage or have a job. And we all need to be really understanding, and I appreciate having a council and staff who are that. So thank you, everyone. And I'll adjourn to whatever the next meeting is, if we don't have another one before then. So we'll adjourn to the next regular city council meeting on Thursday, July 9, 2028, 6:00 PM. Be well and stay safe, everyone, and just love each other. And good night.